So, we are calling this the November 8th special meeting of the Calaveras County Planning Commission to discuss the zoning code update to order 9:05-ish. And get started with the pledge of allegiance. And are there any staff announcements or agenda changes?
None, Madam Chair, thank you.
And no consent agenda, no regular agenda. We will continue our discussion of the zoning code update. And I believe we're going to start with the countywide regulations.
Yeah, so welcome back, everyone. Hope you've had, you should have had plenty of time to get through this, the next section, like you have nothing else to do in your lives, right?
This one keeps making a noise.
Nothing. That's right. So, we don't have Martha today, so, you know, we'll just go through this and see where we land. Think about how you want the rest of this to go through. So, what I'm thinking is Martha and I are working together to prepare our redlined edits for you of the zone districts and use classification section. I'm going through and just trying to, you know, provide you with a little bit of information as to how we got to the changes that we're making. I want to have that available to you and ready for discussion. I was hoping to have that this week, but this week and last week just got crazy, so I didn't quite get it finished, but we're working on it. Do you want to run through this next section before we go back? Or is it better that we just, if it's fresh in your mind? And I don't know, that might be, that might be a mute point based on how much progress we make today, so it's probably a little premature to even ask at this point, but, you know...
Before we get to admin?
Yeah, so that was my thinking was before we get to admin, and I'm assuming that we may make pretty significant progress on the use, on the countywide regulations between today, I know, huh? Between today and tomorrow, you know, we, it's a fairly short section, so if I, if I can't, then, then I'm thinking that it would probably be best to circle back around and deal with the edits for the first section before we hit admin, or do you have a preference?
I think we ought to do admin first because there were so many questions when we were doing the first section as to, is this covered in admin? Is this covered in admin? That I think it'd be good to have a picture of the whole thing.
All right, so we'll work through countywide. Obviously, you'll be taking notes, there, I'm sure there will be some revisions there. Then we'll roll into admin, and then we'll circle all the way back around to the beginning and work our way back through the redlined edits. Does that sound like a good plan?
I agree with that.
Okay.
But I want to bring something up that we probably all received, the information about composting, the example ordinance that specifically addressed biosol.
Yes, yes, and I have some information on that as well, so...
I don't think I got it.
You should have.
An email?
Yeah, an county email, I believe.
Yeah.
I don't have an email yet.
And, oh, you don't have an email yet? Oh, and that's online, so...
That's unfortunate.
Yeah.
Sounds like a fortunate.
Well, given that we, we've had some controversy about that issue, we probably should go back and look at it more carefully.
Absolutely, and I've had a discussion with Lisa Medina, our EMA Director, and she has some strong concerns as well, and she's made a recommendation for us, and, you know, she is willing to come in, if we want to schedule some time, she's willing to come in and discuss that with us. Otherwise, you know, I can just relay what her concerns are and we can make a decision, but, you know, it might be beneficial to us to get, you know, the expert opinion of our director on that matter. You know, I'm sure that you, you're probably going to have some additional questions that I can't answer because it's not my expertise, but I think I've gotten clear direction from her, and it'll be, you know, up to, up to us to determine how we want that to reflect in code, so we can, we can tackle that when we...
While we circle all...
When we... Yeah, so, again, we'll have that further discussion if you want. I can, I was planning on scheduling some time for her to come in. She said she'd be willing to do that, and, and so we can have an open discussion about what those concerns are.
Sure. Thank you.
Alrighty, so, we received the introduction, and per Tim's request, and I'm really happy, he suggested that, before we move on to the next section, if we can just take a short pause, read through the section, you know, just as a refresher, and then begin discussions, I think we'll have a more productive discussion. So let me just go ahead and...
Sorry, will we start with detached accessory structures?
Yeah.
Or does anybody want to talk about the introduction at all?
I don't think we need to talk about the introduction as long as we've read it.
Yep.
All right, so, general regulations. Introduction, general regulations. All right, so, I guess I can skip right through all of this and go right down to the meat.
Gina, could you make your feet a little...
Bigger? I know, some of us...
Move the screen on the close-up. It's right in front of us, I mean, you ought to be able to...
There are so many screens now that, that when you're in the audience, it's hard to decide where to look.
There you go.
Is that good?
Cut the soundtrack.
Are they working on the roof still?
That's the dentist.
Stick it up there.
Julie has some kitty cats. Oh yeah, my Halloween candies all disappeared.
My first comment would be on 1701-030?
1701-030, detached accessory structures.
Yeah, down in B, there talks about a permitted main use, is that the same as a primary use?
Yes.
Then should we use the word "primary" since it's used?
Uh, we can.
I think that would probably...
Okay.
And I think we ought to maybe consider doing a search and being consistent about that really.
Yeah, so that's one thing that we've been trying to do is, is every time we make a change like that, we've been trying to go through the entire document and change so it's all consistent. Okay, so...
I still have kind of a conceptual... issue, confusion, I don't know what it is. So, I understand this with regards to commercial and R1, R2, or, you know, that, but the... Are we really saying, so on ag land, somebody's first structure could be a barn?
Under...
It says it applies to every zone, every structure.
Right.
When the title is detached accessory structure, that sounds like it's detached from an accessory to a main building on the side.
Yes, but so...
So what you're saying that you might, the main building...
Could be a barn, right?
Could be a barn. So it actually, under, yeah, under applicability, barn is actually called out garages, carports, barns, sheds, workshops, gazebos.
Yeah, that's, it says those are all accessory structures. So what is the primary structure on a piece of agricultural land?
Well, I guess it could be a barn. Because it's obviously not a residence because it is ag land and, and the agricultural operation is the primary use of the property, so I guess in that case, instead of maybe, you know, the primary structure, it is also reflected of the use?
I think the sentence is okay. I mean, if the barn is the main building, then you look to see which, what structures are detached from an accessory to that building, and it could include but not limited to, I mean, the fact that it lists barns there, there might be a secondary barn. You know, I, I think it's, I think it's okay.
I feel like this thing is written with the idea that it is an R1 project, and that's the whole underlying feeling. When you read the descriptions of the building, or RR. But, I, this, the idea that we are going to get people on a larger parcel from building a shed before they build their house seems really like we're just setting ourselves up for people to just not get permits.
Well, in the ag zones, you're absolutely correct, but in, you know, in, in the other zones, I mean, because we have to remember, even, even RA has that equal emphasis on, you know, residential agriculture.
Talking about even on RR parcels, meaning, I, this county is full of places that have a garage built first or a shed built first, often without permit, especially because sheds are at, you know, less than 10 by 12, less than 24 inches above the ground, no electrical, don't require a building permit, so how would you regulate this?
Well, they may not require the building permit, but yeah, they, they still have to comply with the zoning code regulations.
How would you regulate it is the question.
Well, and that's always the question with the entire code, is how it gets regulated. And you're right, I mean, you can't prevent people from, you know, from doing things that they shouldn't be doing, but we've, we've seen an increased, you know, desire to build secondary structures prior to the establishment of, of the main structure on the property, which I think in the, in the bigger scheme of things, the most controversial would be residential zones, which does include rural residential, because we have to remember what is the primary, you know, use of a residential zone, that is a residence, so...
So let's say they want to build a well shed.
Yes.
So they can put their well and their septic system in ahead of building a home.
Right.
But what, they can't put a cover over their well.
Um, yeah, technically, I guess according to code, you're correct, so, you know, maybe we need to make some exceptions for those types of structures, because I think it's perfectly acceptable to assume somebody, you know, would want to build a small structure, a little wellhouse over their well to protect all their equipment.
Or even...
And even establish solar, because, you know, solar is one of those things that's often goes in for a well prior to actually building a residence as well.
Because I, I believe in the past, the whole justification for this came about because people were trying to build something and then move into it.
Right.
Was really the concern, I think, so...
Or, in some cases, they want to minimally develop a piece of property and use it more as a recreational parcel rather than the intended use, which is in most cases residential. I think it's less of a problem on ag land, because we're not expecting every ag piece of property to have a residence on it, obviously, but for those residential parcels, I think this absolutely can be an issue.
Now, taking ag land, if we, if there is, say there's cattle grazing on this property, wouldn't, wouldn't that count as a permitted primary use?
Yes.
Okay, and so, then kind of by definition, the first, the first building that would be built would be the main building.
This is going to be a problem.
I guess we can't because of our public nature, we can't adjourn to the conference room or something.
No.
You want me to go ask how long he's going to be?
Yeah.
Let me ask him.
I don't know what they're doing.
Flexible.
Probably going to be all day. Do the pounding, it's the...
Yep.
Emergency, it's really loud.
No, I'm sorry.
On the roof, so it's definitely, and they're fixing the skylights today, so it's going to be...
Oh. That's the skylight? Sounds like they're right outside the door.
I know, it's on the roof.
Oh wow.
Like outside the door. Yeah, maybe they can lean down. Exactly.
I guess we can all just speak up.
My mom told me I talked to...
Shout at each other, okay. Okay, so I, I guess I'm not, I'm not really seeing the concern since, you know, since we, since we basically say that the provisions do not apply to accessory dwellings, obviously, attached or detached, blah, 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 sorry, that's the wrong section. Rationale. Detached accessory structures may only be constructed on a lot on which there may be a permitted main use, I think that pretty much, to which the accessory structure is related, I, I think that pretty much covers every circumstance.
I do, I just don't see any reason to prevent people from building a shed. I can in a small subdivision where it's pretty nice, right? They don't have fences yet, and they're starting to accumulate and store things out there, but I just feel like we're...
I, I have to agree.
I think it's more of a, a control issue to ensure that properties are used in the, in which, in the zone in which, you know, in the, in the way that we intend them to be used.
But it almost feels like an overreach.
What?
It feels a little bit like an overreach.
Well, you know... I know if the commissioner, the commissioner remembers, the barbers, they were the couple that were here a couple of meetings ago, and, and the same issue, you know, they purchased a 20-acre parcel, and they think, oh, 20-acre parcel, I'm going to move my barn, and I'm going to do all kinds of stuff, and we're telling them, no, you're limited, because we have that purpose language in our code that says, you know, what we'd like to see first is either you build a house, or you have plans in Plan Check towards building a house. Except we allow them to build a barn tied into agricultural, if it's tied into agricultural use, so...
A mixed use.
Perhaps...
I'm, I'm thinking of all five-acre parcels that are out there, where people begin to clean up their parcel and prepare, and they just want to have a shed, they want to put their well in, they want to put their septic in, and then they want to, they want their wellhouse to be big enough to hold, you know, some rakes and shovels and miscellaneous and...
I mean, can, can we...
And is that really a problem? I, I completely understand that it shouldn't have power and...
Well, it has to for the wellhouse.
Well, yeah, that's a whole different...
You see, usually, yeah, the power pole's the first thing to come in.
That's a different panel, you can, so that's a different...
But if we call that, could we make...
Want to tell people, I'm sorry, you're owning this, you know, the files are, you know, you're going to build this, so, so you're not going to get your house permit right now. But really, do we care if they have a shed on it as long as they're not living in it?
What's the worst case scenario? If you don't have this regulation, what's the worst case?
The worst case is, is that any one individual can build whatever they want on their property without establishing it as with a primary use. So for instance, you have a residentially zoned parcel, we don't require this, you can put up a shed or a workshop or a garage and never put up a house in a residential neighborhood, so...
Well, maybe we can tag it just to residents.
Yeah, I was just going to say, that might be the thing.
Really only rural residential, I see as the issue.
But see, and...
One, that's probably not, and you don't want those people to wait in that, because the neighbors aren't going to enjoy that.
So maybe we could just pull that out specifically.
Yeah, maybe we can enumerate what might be allowed.
Well, and...
What size wouldn't be allowed.
Well, maybe it's not necessarily, maybe it's a combination of the zone and the parcel size?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's a good idea.
Yes.
I mean, because it's easy to establish, you know, it's easy to say, I'm going to build a barn on an ag piece of property to, you know, to provide shelter for, you know, feed and livestock, or, you know, a barn for my tractor because I'm putting in a pumpkin patch, though, that's, that's an easy coordination. The, the problem that we often find is in fact the rural residential zone, because it is a residential zone, and we all know that a lot of those rural residential zoned parcels are not small one acre, half acre, one acre, even two acre parcels, in fact, a lot of them are five plus, all the way up to what we see in Bar 20, Diamond 20, Circle 20, which are all 15 to 20 acre parcels.
So I guess I'm trying to understand why would it be such a big deal if you had a little shed and didn't build a house? I don't understand what the rub is on that.
I, I don't either, but I do in a, in a small neighborhood where that shed is just kind of, accumulate stuff around it, and, and the other thing that I have seen over the years and years and years I've been working here is that a lot of people buy a parcel and they're going to build their retirement home, so they might own it for quite a long time before they do anything, and they build a patio with a little trellis over it, and they like to go there at night and have a little picnic, or they still live in the Bay Area and they come up and they want to be able to go out there and, you know, invite their neighbors over and have a cocktail on their property, so they have a little close to the ground deck with, you know, that they look at their view from, and I feel like telling people, well, that's not allowed, so now you're doing something that is not allowed, is, it feels like we're just...
Overreaching.
So, with that, are we concerned with individuals that want to put in an RV pad with power and a septic system and a well with a deck and a cover?
I, I think we are only, well, I might not be actually on rural residential, but, but I think that our, the tone of our code would say, no, because you cannot live in your RV there permanently.
Right. I'm not going to live there, though, I'm just going to come up on the weekends and I'm going to stay there.
Right, and, and truthfully, I could care less.
Yeah, and I think most people are the same.
I would rather have people do that in a, in a, that is connected to a septic system and has legal power.
Right, but then on the other hand, it's almost encouraging...
Exactly, it's enabled...
It's, it's encouraging the, you know, individuals to assume that it's acceptable to live in a recreational vehicle.
Right.
Which creates a whole nother code issue.
Again, I actually don't care about that and actually think that we would, if we're really worried about providing housing to people who can't afford something, I think that's something we should come back to, I don't think we can, I don't think we can make that philosophical argument.
Right, I'm just wondering how you differentiate between, I mean, if you're saying accessory structures are okay in the rural residential zone, say, on a parcel of five acres or more, how do you, I mean, where's the line do we draw? Oh, you can't have the deck in the, in the shed for your RV, but you can have a small, you know, 20 by 20 shed to put some tools in.
Oh, I'm not saying a 20 by 20 shed, I'm saying a 10 by 12 shed, the same shed that is allowed to be built without a permit.
Doesn't require a permit.
When without power to it.
And why, I, I still don't understand why if you get a permit, it would matter if you have a 20 by 20 shed?
Well, that's what I'm asking is, is there, is, are you drawing the line somewhere? I mean, between a size of building, a type of structure, I mean, because...
A line somewhere, and it would have to be without having, it could, it couldn't have power, I think that would be one of the primary...
It could not?
Could not have power, because as soon as you provide power, someone's going to try to live there or rent it to somebody.
Right, but then that excludes...
A gazebo with light.
The wellhouse.
Well, you could have solar.
I mean, unless it's hooked up to power.
Because that's not a full, they can't, they can't have a 200 amp panel with that, they have just a well service, we have allowed that in the past. That's like in the past, we allowed all sorts of things as long as they were not livable.
How has, how has, do all the amateur rural counties addressed this very same issue? How have they done it? Have they, have they, have they looked at this? Is this a continuance of, of existing provisions? It doesn't say in the...
It is. It is, yeah.
And it's kind of marked over the years, the interpretation of it. I, I know I'm spending a lot of time on this, but I feel like it's...
Well, I think it's, it needs to.
Matters to people.
It needs to, because, because, you know, we see it all the time. Most cases are, a property owner buys a piece of land and they have every intention of building a home, maybe they're an owner builder, and they want to build their garage first, which gives them a place to store all of their equipment, maybe they're going to come up on the weekends and do a little land, you know, property management, they can store their construction tools, and it kind of gives them a little base while they're working on a bigger project. Currently, what we say is, you know, if they're showing the...
Progress.
Progress, if we know through the submittal of building plans that they are really intending to build a residence, we will allow them the accessory structure, the garage, the shed, prior to, I mean, we've...
It's subjective.
Right.
Yeah.
Which is really what we don't want to do, because, you know, we don't like being put, we don't like being put in that position every time, you know? Why is it acceptable here, but it's not acceptable there? It's just not a very good practice.
Neighbors have, they just didn't get a permit, you know, so now they're throwing their neighbor under the bus.
Yeah, then, yeah.
So are we, are we wanting to exempt specifically in the rural residential? And maybe even include that RA into that as well?
Yeah, I think with a, with a acreage.
Exempt, exempt certain structures, like Michelle is saying, structures that are small enough that don't require a building permit. Which is a hundred and twenty square feet, no electricity, no plumbing.
The other way we do it is the, our utility buildings.
We can, we can say it applies to all zones except such as them. Yeah, if we don't want it to apply to A one or AP or.
And how many is too many, I mean, are we okay, are we okay with? One shed or are we okay with twenty sheds?
So I was out on a piece of property recently, it's like a twenty acre parcel, I believe. It prob, it has a, a well already on it, a no septic. And it pro, it has a gazebo, there, they see this, watch the sunset on the property, it has. Two or three smallish sheds that, that do, really do just have that kinda stuff on them. Uh, smallish sheds, so, and, but no one can see it. You know, no, the neighbors can't see where they are, they're kinda tucked into a corner and, and I think. Really, these people have owned the property forever, now they're getting ready to build their house finally, you know, fifteen years later. Haven't bothered anybody, why would we wanna prevent, and that, that's really, and that's what I see all the time.
I mean, people pay taxes on their property, so to some extent, I can see um, you know, exactly where you're going, I mean. You're paying taxes on a piece of property, you've owned it for a long time, you should be able to enjoy it to some extent. Whether you're ready to move up there and build a residence or not, so I guess it's just up to us to figure out what that. Well, where, where that fine line runs and do we, do we really care about it, um, you know?
So, so I have a question.
I, 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 I think we don't want. Properties to be used as storage facilities.
They don't wanna be renting to the rent.
Let me, let me, let me just build this great big building and I'm gonna bring all my junk up here that, you know, that I, that I can't keep at my house in the Bay Area. I'm just gonna store all my, all my junk up here.
As long as it's in the barn.
I guess as long as it's in the barn, who cares, I, I'm just saying, you know, what, what do we, what do we, what are we concerned about?
Well, this brings me to my question.
Yes.
So I know this guy, he, he just bought forty acres, his name's Don Parker. He wants to build a barn on that forty acres, he's gonna run his cattle over there.
Yeah.
And I would like to put in a septic cuz eventually someday I may build a house on that. And I'd like to put a bathroom in my barn from when I'm over there working.
Sure.
Is that allowed? And there's nothing else there.
The parcel's owned.
It's, it's a, what is it working, I don't know, you guys switched me, no, it used to be RR, but you guys switched me, it's like A one now or.
Okay, well, in an A one zone, then yes, is a.
I can do that.
If you've established an agricultural use on your property, you would be allowed.
Cattle, that is, that'd be where I work my cattle.
So, back to the RR, it, RR seems to be the, the main concern, so. If we kinda circle back around to um, to the first section of code when we talked about animal keeping. Um, so you can't have livestock in an RR zone um, or any other animals. Without establishing a residence first, so um.
What about?
Animal keeping is, is in conjunction with a, a residence. In the RR zone.
I, I understand.
Now, I mean, whether we choose to modify that or not, I mean, that's the way we've got it written now.
I think, I think we beat that one up a bit, that does seem appropriate, the RA is the. Then, you know, you shift that to the RA, can you have animal keeping on RA prior to establishing a residence?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's not necessarily a problem because you could do your accessory as and. Related to your agricultural or animal keeping activity, right?
In the RA zone.
In the RA zone.
Yes.
So it's really RR is the only zone that I see this as being.
Right.
An issue.
Okay, but RR is typically ten or under acres upon.
Not necessarily, so you think of Rancho Calaveras. Rancho Calaveras is the largest subdivision we have in our county and those parcels range from a half an acre in size to three acres.
Right.
You jump from half an acre to three acre in Rancho to twenty acre parcels in diamond twenty, circle twenty and bar twenty. You've literally got everything in between, rural residential is everywhere.
So here's a question that I have, so you cannot put cattle on that to, for fire prevention?
We are saying that animal keeping, currently drafted in code, animal, well, not current code, drafted update, let me, okay. We are, we are putting a, a head to acre ratio on residential parcels. We've excluded the ability to have quote unquote livestock in the R one, R two and R three zones. So really what it applies to is RR, because we've also excluded the resource zones because they're completely different.
Cattle on your RR parcel until you have a house there.
Exactly, you, they're, they're in conjunction with the house.
To me.
Huh?
Yeah, I, I get it, I get it, for me, I get it because people might just throw their animals out there and then.
Well, and that's, and I'll use this as an example, we had a vacant parcel in Rancho Calaveras. Somebody from out of the area bought the property, brought up literally, I think it was. Like seventy head of cattle or some obnoxious number.
That was behind me.
Yes, dumped them on this piece of property, threw out a little watering trough.
Yes.
And, and the people are around him are going, what in the world is going on here, literally was like. Totally unacceptable.
He was bringing pumpkins to him, is all he was saying.
And so that's the kind of thing that needs to be prevented because up at, at that point. Um, you know, we had to try to, you know, dig around and circumvent, trying to figure out how to. You know, enforce that from happening and it's, and it's not clearly defined or enumerated in code right now. So that's why we came up with the animal keeping section, which actually is, is something that other jurisdictions are doing all over. So, you know, I reached out to um, to our livestock advisor through the UC extension, our farm advisor's office. And he provided me with copies of other adjacent, you know, codes relative to animal keeping. Which then started to realize, this is something that other jurisdictions already have in their codes. And, and it's a, it's a big question that people call up and ask is, how many animals can I keep on my property? And so I think it, it's, it's up to us to figure out what, where is it appropriate to have animals and where is it not? And for those parcels that maybe it's not so appropriate, um, you know. Maybe allow them, but allow them with some restrictions so you can keep them under control.
Yeah, and for me, just because we burn all around me every single year. I just know that if you can have some livestock on, long enough to eat it down, it.
Absolutely.
Zero hazard.
And somebody could probably bring goats in, rent, rent the goats.
You can rent the goats, you can do, yeah, right.
But it sounds like that wouldn't be allowed.
No, I would be allowed, you can't have animal keeping like they're a permanent.
Okay, so you can bring them in and take them out?
Sure.
And that, and so is there a?
I mean, if you're, if you're renting, if you're renting goats for, for, you know, for fire management purposes.
Cattle and you bring your cattle to, we own a six acre parcel on Burson Road and we, we put a couple horses over there to keep the, the. The grass down and they're there most of the time, that would not be, I'm just.
It depends on.
I'm learning here, I'm plowing.
It depends, it depends on the zone.
It's, it's R five.
Yeah.
So it would not be allowed?
It, technically, no.
Interesting, and for me, it keeps the balance down and that's why we do it.
In and out, it probably would.
And, and the main.
Complaints, so it's not been an issue, really.
And again, we're a complaint based county, so um, you know.
So I have a suggestion.
Yes.
And I think it's only RR that we are concerned about and I would think that maybe we could allow. A structure that does not require, a single structure that does not require a building permit. So that would be, you know, a fence, a ten by twelve shed with no power, um.
So if you put in a fence, you couldn't put in a shed?
No, well, we're talking on RR, you're, probably people are not gonna be building fences.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, so, and maybe a fence doesn't count, I'm, I'm just. What are non-permit, don't require permits.
Right.
And that with a permit, we might allow up to a whatever size we wanted to say without power. Blah, 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 so they could have a.
Well, cuz I'm thinking, the most common request is, I own a large piece of property in the rural residential zone. And it needs to be managed, I wanna bring my tractor up and some hand tools. And I want a safe place to put them so I can come up here on the weekend and I can start managing this property. So eventually, I can do things like cut a road, a house pad, build a house. Those kinds of things are coming later in the future, but there's a need right now for the property owner to, to provide some. To, to ma, to maintenance their, their land.
But a ten by twelve won't suffice.
It's not gonna suffice much.
Allow that with no permits, that, a single shed, ten by twelve without permits, cuz there's no permit required for that. But then allow up to a twenty four by twenty four, whatever size we wanna.
I agree.
Say, with a permit.
With a building permit.
With a building permit.
And you're talking about on RR.
On RR.
Now, is it within a s, a certain acreage?
Well, that, that's what I think we'd all need to look at, what seems fair, if there RR is one acre.
Yeah, there are.
Maybe, well, maybe that's still fine. Do we care, they're ultimately. I don't, it, I think it really has more to do with whether it's, seems like it's gonna bother the neighbors or not and really is. Isn't a neighbor gonna be less bothered by something enclosed and locked up in a building than by just junk left out there?
For me, I don't have a rub with it at all, having a shed, I mean, the, especially if it's tastefully done, which you can't really dictate. You can't dictate that.
And I guess, I suppose, if you, just because you live in a residence on site, doesn't ensure that the property is not gonna be.
A junkyard.
A junkyard anyway.
Yeah, so I, if we just provided some mechanism to allow people to do it. Legally or in compliance.
So right now, what I'm hearing is, in the rural residential zone. We're okay with a single structure that does not require a building permit, so that would allow someone to build a wellhouse.
And a ten by twelve.
Or a ten by twelve shed, no electricity, no plumbing.
Yeah.
Right, and even a platform that's close to the ground and limited in size, I mean. There's no real angst over any of that.
And having somebody bring an RV, I just, personally, I don't know, I just don't have a hubbub with that at all.
But we can't.
We don't wanna have RV parks all over.
Right, and that's kind of outside, I think, the scope of what we can deal with in this round of the zoning code. Because it has implications for the way we are looking at density and sequin, right?
Right, right.
So, and so maybe then we also, we would allow them with a permit up to the size of a two car garage or something. That would allow somebody to keep a, a pickup truck or a quad or their tools locked up and tidy. But without plumbing and electrical so that they're not tempted to move in or attach their RV to it.
So still no electricity, no plumbing?
What I would say, because I think that's the thing that.
You can't charge your batteries or, I don't know, it just seems to me.
Well.
But they can have an, a ag or a well service, which would allow them to charge their batteries, I mean, I.
Or solar.
Yeah, or solar.
Green.
Yeah, so if you have a wellhouse, you, you're allowed to have a thirty amp panel or your pump. Prior, we, we have traditionally allowed that prior to pulling a building permit for a house. Because people wanna establish trees and they wanna.
Sure.
You have access to their water and we want people to have water in case of a fire.
Absolutely, so we have one, one building that does not require a permit.
Mm-hmm, potentially one that does.
But you wanna limit the size of that building and not allow electricity?
To the size of a two car garage, which is what?
Like twenty four by twenty four? I, I'm just suggesting that, I think it's, everybody needs to be in what they think is fair.
But then do, what about the wellhouse?
Yeah, I think they can have.
They can have a wellhouse under the single structure, no building permit required.
So if somebody builds that twenty four by twenty four and they put electricity in it and then they throw an RV next to it. And your neighbor complains, you're gonna come over there and tell him, you can't do that.
Well, if they're living in the RV, then yeah, that would generate a.
Get a um, electrical service from PG and E without the county signing off.
You can't.
Exactly, no, you can't, exactly, but.
Unless you know how to bootleg electricity.
To have electricity in your garage is.
But that's how we end up with people living there.
So I mean, that's, that's the thing is, I mean, we're trying to be flexible to allow individuals to have something extra. Before they actually, you know, make the final move to, to push to, to build a house. Uh, but what, but what is, what is, what is enough, you know, I mean, because.
They can buy a single solar panel with a small battery like an RV uses and they can charge their stuff with that and we, we're not gonna say anything about it.
Right, and if you're camping, people have generators, they do it all the time, so, um, you know, that kind of, kinda keeps it. I think it kinda holds it down to the truly, I'm just camping, opposed to I'm living in my RV.
What about acreage limitations, cuz there are RRs that are.
Well, you're thinking one acre limitation.
Yeah, wow.
Well, and think, you know, I mean, you've got residential subdivisions that are, you know, three acres in size. That are zoned RR, is it appropriate?
I think there are smaller lots and tree brands that are zoned RR.
Yeah, I think there's non-compliant parcels out there that are smaller in some places. But, so what do we think is a, a minimum RR sized parcel that? This seems reasonable.
So I guess if you're thinking the primary, most often what we hear is. I want to be able to manage my acreage. So, I mean, I guess it, you need to think, okay, well, how much acreage, you know, is, is. Manageable enough, I mean, how much do you need to manage before you actually need to start storing stuff on site?
Like a riding mower or something. Well, an acre.
Right.
Yeah, I would say an acre.
Or three quarters of acre. Is that what you got? Just trying to get yourself in there now?
I mean, I think somebody could, could argue that half acre, but I think we have to pick a point that makes sense.
An acre makes sense, I think. Yeah, okay. So would you like to see it at half an acre is what you're saying? Okay, does an acre seem reasonable?
So, an acre or more in the rural residential zone, prior to the establishment of a residential use structure. You can have one structure, um, no building permit required. Plus one structure equivalent to a two car garage, twenty four by twenty four, no electricity, no plumbing.
Do you, do you write it as twenty five, right, twenty four or a square footage?
Yeah, I think you do a square footage.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Just, I'm.
Right. No, no, you're right. I, I just jotted that down as a.
And the one without a permit, if you have a wellhouse, that's, that counts, that's, you've used up your one without.
Right.
Yeah, but you would just make your wellhouse big enough to be the shed, yeah.
That makes sense, and I really appreciate your working it through, cause I.
It seemed like an easy one, but guess what, it was.
Feeling jittery like, I, I don't like this. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. That was a good one. This is fun.
Should we give her a moment and then we can talk about access?
So we're, um. Okay, so. Um, do we have an issue, because I, I've, I've made some notes. Um, do we have an issue with C, living quarters prohibited? The use of a detached accessory structure as living quarters is prohibited. I know that we've had a previous conversation. Uh, Michelle used the example of, uh, you know, a single-family residence. And, um, the desire to have a detached bedroom bathroom, um, as part of the plan. Um, so right.
Long as we maybe clarify to say that. That single-family residence could be made up of detached pieces that are all part of one residence. It, this is like accessory buildings, and I wouldn't say that a building. I, I, let's say you had a.
Well, it says living, living quarters.
I understand living quarters in, in detached accessory structures, but I wouldn't call. Piece design is part of the primary residence, just cause it's not connected, an accessory structure.
Well, then.
I think it's part of that primary compound or whatever.
I think then, under applicability, there should be some recognition of that.
See, now that, that's not the way we're interpreting it, so, that's why there's, that's why I'm asking the question, because, um. Because our, our, our primary concern is, is the, the ability. It's kind of like opening up the structure to be used as a short-term vacation rental. It would be very simple to be able to, you know, start renting those rooms out. For transient occupancy, and that's kind of, that was the whole reason why we included that. But the reason I'm bringing it up is because our interpretation of this is that. Those detached bedroom bathroom that we were previously talking about would be prohibited. And I know that there was some discussion about, um, you know. Having some flexibility and allowing people to, you know, be creative in their design.
So I know there are other jurisdictions that require if you have. Pod design is your primary, um, so that, that pieces aren't detached. That they have to be connected with covered walkways in order to interpret it as part of the. All part of that primary structure.
That's what I was envisioning.
And so, and.
But then that really wouldn't be detached, right?
Right, so, so. I, I think that would probably be an acceptable solution.
So let me, cause let me use an example. So we have a piece of property, I'm not gonna get too detailed because I don't wanna.
Yeah.
Uh, existing on the parcel are three homes. Um, it's about twenty acres in size, three homes exist. Uh, it's a, it's a vineyard, it's a beautiful piece of property, the main structure is huge. The other structures are reasonably sized, um. Uh, folks from out of the area purchased the property for, with the intention of moving to this property on retirement. In the interim, they're renting it out as a short-term vacation rental. Um, they placed two more homes on the property in the form of cargo containers. Um, the cargo containers, um, they were misled to think that they didn't need a building permit. So they placed these cargo containers on the property and they, they built the inside that meets. The structure of them on the in- interior meets our definition of a dwelling. So the building permits come through and the thing is denied. There are already one over density without these two. Uh, adding two more dwelling units puts them three over the allowed density. So we denied them. Um, based on the occupancy of the structures. As defined through the building department, through the UBC. They were able to make some very, very minor. Uh, modifications and basically essentially have the same units, but because we're calling them a different occupancy.
They're guest rooms now.
Yeah, they're guest rooms, as a detached, as a detached living quarters. They now have essentially the same structures as they previously, as they intentionally wanted. And even though we're, we're saying you can't use them for transient occupancy. You know that it's likely to happen. So that's kind of where we're going with this. Um, just wanna make sure that everyone is okay and understands the reason behind it.
So are we not allowing transient occupancy in Calabars County? We, do we frown on that, I guess?
No, they, it's just that.
No, these.
Multiple units on.
Right. So in this.
I know that brings in a lot of TOT tax and, you know, there's a lot of.
Right, but there's, the, short-term vacation rentals is a much larger, um, issue that needs to be addressed separately. Um, outside of this ordinance and, and the way those dwelling, the way those residences look now. They actually, uh, you could actually solely inhabit those structures. They've got what could be, you know, uh, identified as a kitchen and. Right, right. And so, um. You know, that's the danger of allowing the detached living quarters. Is they have a tendency to kind of morph into bigger things.
Which we don't want.
And, well.
Well, not without appropriate consideration, whether that's another permit or, you know. Whatever the case may be, that's for an, a discussion for another ma- uh, another time.
So is it then a bed and breakfast that when it hits, you know, six rooms?
Well, I mean, what, well, it, yeah, when she hits six rooms, you're actually a motel, hotel.
Living quarters isn't defined somewhere, right?
No.
So, I mean, is it sleeping or is it sleeping and cooking and?
It is, sleeping and cooking is a living quarters, well, it's all livable space, habitable space. But the, as soon as you have cooking, it's an ADU.
Right, right.
So that's what's limited. So that's what happens is they, I mean, this has been going on for as long as I can remember. The, people take out the built-in cooking. And then it is just another guest room or a studio space if someone's an artist, uh, they often do things like that.
I mean, but they could have a hot stove or a microwave oven and other ways of actually making food. So, there's, there's always. I mean, it's.
Time when this wasn't an issue in any jurisdiction I've ever been in.
Right.
So.
And, and I just, I don't know, I just don't see why it's a big problem, it.
Cause the neighbor doesn't wanna see twenty different cars and it's a, basically a hotel is going on.
I mean, there's, there's a lot of impacts that are generated by such a use. Um, and, and, and those impacts often need to be analyzed, at least from a land use standpoint.
And I think again.
I'm hearing you and I agree that.
People are doing it and it's not causing a problem, because they have the space around them. But then.
But maybe it needs to be defined as is acreage.
Well, it should, I. I think it's a different use when you're renting out many bedrooms. To a different set of people in every bedroom.
So are we okay with the way it's written, um?
The living quarters prohibited.
The living quarters prohibited, the use of a detached accessory structure as living quarters is prohibited.
Well, nah. It depends what you, I think we'd have to define living quarters.
How about detached?
Cause truly, if it's an artist and it's their studio. Are we saying they can't have a detached studio or they're a writer and they want a writing shed?
Well, I think they, you were, people were saying that it would have to be connected by a roof.
Yeah, but, but if you're on twenty acres.
I agree, I agree. Liberty guy.
But maybe there should be a limit on the number of them, like. We could say this doesn't preclude the use of it as a studio or.
Take sleeping out of it, I mean, take the bedroom aspect out of it somewhere.
Yeah, that's hard to do because people can use it as a bedroom anyway.
Sure, I take a nap anywhere.
Nomad culture, right? But. Or maybe you limit the number of them that. Because at some point now you, you are something other than a home. Cause somebody could have a six-bedroom house and they could rent out every room separately as a, under BBR.
Sure.
But if they're actually building something with a dozen spaces. I'd say they're building something different.
I agree with that.
So, could we come up with a number that says. This doesn't preclude the use of detached spaces at living quarters up to. A total of the primary structure and those detached. You know, not more than. But then what happens if they're off, they, we're also telling you, then your house can't have that.
Right, 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 right. I, I suggest just leave it as is, um. If somebody really wants that flexibility, being creative and putting a bedroom and bathroom. They can just connect it with a breezeway and that's a way to circumvent.
How about with the, with the, uh, permit, you know?
I was gonna say, could we do it within AUP or CUP? And then have a limit on the total. I mean, you could limit the number of detached wa- spaces to something reasonable. That could be used as living quarters.
Just seems like we're getting more complicated rather than.
But we don't wanna be more restricted either, we wanna try and.
Do we simply want to just allow, um, detached living quarters subject to an AUP?
No more than so many per acre or anything like that.
Yeah. I, I would be okay with that, subject to an AUP. I think at some point, we're gonna have to develop a policy for it, but. You know, it's only a problem because there's, so a few people abuse whatever.
Well, isn't that why we have regulation? If everybody was just, you know, reasonable and, 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 you know, courteous and we wouldn't have to worry about all this.
Thank you for bringing that up again, Gina.
That's what Jane Madison said.
Okay, have we beat this one to death?
I think so.
Okay. Okay, moving on to access, let's give ourselves a.
I'm okay with proof of legal access.
Are we ready to discuss it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think so.
I think.
Gina, are you ready?
I think in that, the second line of A, um. Uh, as indicated by a recorded deed, parcel or subdivision map or other document determined adequate. By the planning director.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, something, something like that.
Then under slope access, well, I actually. I'm, I'm not sure exactly where, where and when these. When the, when these standards are gonna be applied, but, uh, as far as wording goes. Uh, I think we need to have, uh, proposed residential development that is located on slopes of fifty percent or more. Maybe subject to one or more of the following requirements. I don't think we want. All things to be required in every case.
Right. I also felt like. It's awkwardly placed in the access section, which feels like access is about getting to the property. And then, but this is. Seems to be talking about the entire project.
I have one question about this section, which was, did you intend for this to be ministerially applied? And if so, do we wanna make sure that the language fits within ministerial?
Fits within what?
A ministerial approval for CECL purposes. So we might wanna take a closer look or have interior harness take a look to make sure that the director. That we have enough specificity in the ordinance, that it's not. A discretionary approval that would itself require CECL.
Right, I, I'm just trying to understand, are we talking about for the driveway? But it sounds like we're talking about for the entire project development.
Right, right.
So I almost felt like it needed a, a section for.
What?
Just the steep lot. Or something rather than access, which to me sounds like driveways.
Well, I was assuming that was what, when it said slope access, that's what we were talking about.
But I, they're saying an increased lot size could be required, so. That, this isn't just looking at the driveway, this is looking at the whole development. So development of, you know, parcels greater than fifty percent slope or fifty percent. And like what portion of the parcel, like you could have a big parcel and. It could have a fifty percent slope on it, but it could have a quarter acre that is dead level and not a problem.
So why is increased lot size in here? If we're our, if, if we're talking about driveway access.
Cause it's not, it's talking about everything.
This is encompassing both, I think, individual and.
Right.
Cause the construction standards covers the driveway and even steep driveways, it, it has all the requirements for that. In those sections.
Well, then I'm, I'm back to where you were as far as what's this doing in here.
Well, doesn't forty-two ninety, forty-two ninety-one address this anyway? More or less, yeah.
But none of, the rest of this stuff, I think, is trying to say that if you're a particularly steep parcel. You are gonna have additional requirements for the development of the parcel entirely. Or it seems like that's what it's trying to say.
You can't increase your lot size, obviously, if you have one lot and it's one house.
Well, this is the, this would be considered during the, um, uh, residential, um, development. So we, we would be, we would be, um, reviewing a tentative map, whether it's a parcel map or a subdivision map.
Yeah, I, I could see what you're trying to.
It seems like it's talking about development of creating the parcel in the first place. So it just feels like it's not quite in, in the right spot. I think that what you're trying to get to is good stuff here. I think that what you're trying to get to is good stuff here.
Yeah, cause I mean, especially when you get down to six and we're talking about ensuring a stable, safe and adequate building site. We're not talking about access. I, I, I've caught on to what you're saying.
Yeah, that's, so I just had circled it just, that I wasn't sure it was in the right place.
So this is all carried forward from existing code? So, um, do we want to just simply eliminate the slope access section?
Or create it as its own, give it its own number?
Yeah.
Just like we have a density bonus section, maybe we have a, um, development on steep.
Yeah.
Parcel or steep. Land, I don't know. A challenging land section.
Would this, would these considerations also come into, uh, under the building? Yeah, I mean.
Yes, and public works. Potentially.
Correct.
Depends, but I think it's mostly gonna come up when people are proposing, say they're doing a, a parcel split.
Right.
And they're saying, well, I have enough space to do this six thousand square feet, it's fine, you know? And you're saying, well, where would you go on that?
Right, right.
We have parcels like that all over the county.
So in A, we're talking about proof of legal access for new construction and then C, we're specifically saying residential development, which from my standpoint does mean that you're reviewing a map for the creation of parcels.
The, the only thing that makes this strange is that all of our map and subdivision requirements are in a different title that we're not working on. It's in title sixteen.
Yes. But I think this is, is trying to give people a heads up that just meeting the minimum requirements that are in our zoning ordinance might not actually get you an approval.
Right.
Or that there may be additional costs associated with it, like retaining walls and, and drainage design.
Right, so not only do we consider, you know, proof of legal access for development, um, you know, land use applications, discretionary actions. Um, this implies that we're also, um, requiring legal, uh, proof of legal access for building permits.
And what are beyond that?
Provided for all new construction and site alterations.
Right, but isn't that true already? We require that we provide proof of legal.
Yeah, um, I would, I think it might be best if we actually add um, in the requirement that, you know, link it back also to, um, development, discretionary development projects. Because this just kind of assumes that we're only interested in new construction. Which in my mind, I'm least, I, I, I'm the least worried about new construction and more worried about that discretionary application where they're asking me for, whether it's a use permit or more specifically the creation of new parcels.
So we're in agreement that, that, um, slope access should not be a part of this particular, be a doctor. Is what you were saying.
There's also some rid line things that have to do with creation of parcels on ridge lines and fires and having to have mapped where those are, are subject to other requirements and I'm wondering if we should find that and move in at least a reference to it as part of this.
Couldn't we just say that, that compliance for all discretionary approvals, compliance with, um, the forty-two net, I mean, I don't, this, I don't know the specific citation, the forty-two ninety, forty-two ninety-one.
Mentioned here.
Right.
But I think the bigger picture of, you have to be able to get off the parcel and park two cars and build a house.
Right.
Is really, I think, what you're trying to say here.
Right.
And that can, is that discrep- that can be somewhat discretionary or?
Well, the, the thing problem is we already have a whole bunch of parcels like this where there, there's literally, you can, I mean, you stand on, I mean, as the pavement or gravel.
Right, right. And you, and you wonder, you know, how in the world did we ever, or why did we ever create these parcels to begin with?
Yep. So it's gonna come up if you're creating the parcel, but it could also come up again. You're just trying to get a building permit. You're still gonna have to deal with all these things.
Right.
And that's what, I think you're just trying to point that out to somebody, but I, I don't know if this is where they would look. Is this section?
Maybe it has slope access section?
I would, people aren't gonna go to the zoning code if they're pulling a building permit and they wanna know how to construct their driveway. Or more so, um, you know.
They will for parking though. I mean, so, so I mean, there is, I could see that you'd have the, something here that points you to the more detailed pieces of this perhaps. Maybe it's access on slope sites. And you keep that in this access section. And then some of this other stuff gets moved to its own section.
But do we already have a section having to do with driveway? Uh, slope?
In the zoning code?
Yeah.
No.
Doesn't public works have something?
It's public works and through the building department, um, requirements based on elevation and.
Yeah.
And ADA requirements.
Yeah.
Okay.
Twelve percent.
So this can point to all that, but it's, I think, where they're trying to get at the bigger pictures of how do you actually even get development on those parcels that don't have, it's not even just downslopes, it's up slopes where you cannot get.
I'm just kind of thinking we don't really even need it because, I mean, we're not really saying anything. I mean, it's not like you, you're, you're specific. But I mean, I mean, it's not like we're specifically giving, providing a, a definite regulation that says you shall do the following. I mean, if, if we're talking about, um, you know, if we're talking about reviewing a subdivision map um, for, for slope access, we're going to be bringing in the public works, the, um, the, the chief building official, fire agencies, and they're gonna be looking at these slopes in compliance with their regulations.
So could we just have an stress or a note back in the zoning section that says that whatever the density allowed in a particular thing is that, um, those minimum lot sizes, there, there could just be a note that says that an increased lot size could be required
Okay.
to, um, ensure some, uh, access to the parcel on steeply sloped lot, what, something along those lines, just a heads up to people.
Well, then, then you're only dealing with access. I mean, I, I thought.
Well, no, I, I think we could.
I, I, I.
And then there'd be the additional grading and drainage requirements, blah, blah, blah. And then let public works, just point to the public works.
Yeah, I mean, just looking at this under the general heading of general site regulations, I think what we might do with this section is, um, create slope access as its own subheading. And, you know, so the, so A and B would refer to access and then we have a section that says slope access and then we have these other requirements in it. I think it would make it really clear that we're separating slope access from, uh, uh, you know, the, the, the proof of legal access requirement and whatever, uh, standards there are, one through six, if we need to, uh, modify those or, or, um, identify some kind of language, uh, would be more appropriate, but I think it needs to be called out separately.
Well, I mean, yes, even separate, but the, the, as Michelle pointed out, it, it's not just dealing with access, it's dealing with, is this an appropriate site?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but, you know, again, if you're looking at this from general site regulations, that is the major, that is, that is the big heading.
The heading.
So, yeah, so it, it does fit into that category.
Yeah, but maybe as a separate section.
Yeah.
Separate section, not, not part of the.
Right, maybe it just needs a new title for it or what it's.
We'll see what we can do.
Yeah.
Yeah. You understand the issue?
I think so.
Wow, it looks so simple.
It just isn't, it's very complicated.
I think you jinxed us, Michelle, you were like, oh, we're gonna, we're gonna open this section in one day.
So, do you have all the notes you need on that section?
I think so.
Is there anything anybody else would like to bring up before we talk about demolition?
No, let's demolish.
Okay.
I'm always surprised sometimes at what, doesn't it, it's being old. This is dealing with buildings built seven years after I was born.
I was glad to see that it was seventy-five and not fifty, which is some places.
Fifty is the standard for identifying historical structure of places, but.
One thing I'd note is that, that, uh, conservation and open space, section eight G, only deals with demolition, not alteration.
Alright.
And I think as stated here, it's, it's much too broad because, I mean, if we're talking about any alteration, I, you know, you're painting your closet or putting in something.
Right, that is, yeah, that.
I would suggest is that we say prior to the demolition or significant alteration.
Well.
And then defined, and under C for purposes of the section, significant alteration does not include routine maintenance, component replacement, or changes not visible from the exterior.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, are we talking about the interior versus the exterior?
You can't put a new version on a house.
What if you wanna add a deck? What if you're adding that small bathroom on the back of your house?
Exactly.
You know, I mean, this, alterations can be, you know, it could really get, what if you're switching out your windows?
I mean, I think, I think this is, this is much too broad, maybe what I'm saying is still, doesn't cover what we need, but we need to, we need to deal with alteration.
Right.
And that's why I was.
Well, and we also, I think it, I, I don't know, I'm having a little bit of trouble because it's referring to all structures. So, um, you know, I have.
My seventy-five year old shed.
Well, seriously, so I have a, you know, a, a barn on my property that's a hundred and fifty years old, it's got no foundation. I can't do anything with it and it's ready to fall down and I'm afraid it's gonna fall down on somebody and hurt them or fall down on the, on livestock. It's gonna, it's gonna create, you know, a serious, uh, safety concern.
Well, that's why I'm, I think we say significant alteration and then.
But what is?
They're even just demolishing that.
But just knocking down the old barn that you can't do anything with.
I think I.
Tells me that I have to go get a study.
Keeping old barns, so I think it.
Well, I, I love the old barn, but if it's gonna fall down and it's gonna hurt somebody.
But I think have somebody, have some review of whether you take down the old barn or not. I mean, there was, there was a beautiful old barn right here on Mountain Ranch Road. Um, that, you know, not in very far, that did eventually fall down, the tractor's still there, it was inside. Um, and it was, I, I consider it a, a real shame. I, 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 I see your point being, so do we just let it fall down and that's not altered?
Right.
And that's hazardous.
And that's hazardous.
Yeah.
But.
I, I anticipate.
Not unless we put a safety, uh, or hazard qualification in there that in cases where the structure poses, um, a hazard, uh, you might have an exception clause, but then it kind of starts a slippery slope.
Right.
But.
The problem is if you have.
That apply to discretionary permits, but not to, you know, it doesn't get looked at for every single building permit that somebody gets. But if you're, so, you know, what are we required to do? You know, are we creating a situation where people are gonna be trying to get around this?
I think the intent is to, um, is to preserve those structures that are truly, you know,
Historical, significant and historical.
And, you know, I mean, we've got structures in this county, um, that are, they're, they're, they're in great shape and they're still occupying, you know, businesses or, you know, people. And, you know, there's been talk about, you know, then you have a new property owner that comes in and he wants to put in a gas station and so he wants to literally take down the, the historical structure that everybody knows and loves. Where's the, where's the line? Where do we draw?
That's where, seventy-five years is supposed to draw that line. But you're not supposed to get fond of something unless it's seventy-five years.
Right, so I, I think if we're gonna keep this, then we need to absolutely define the types of structures that we're into. I, I'm not so sure that just the age of the structure itself is significant.
Cause in your situation, if you had to go get a conditional use permit to remove your barn.
Well, they want you to go get a, a cultural resource assessment, so that means I have to spend my money to go out to an archaeology, a, a, you know, a, a qualified professional to come in and, and analyze this structure and, and I'm paying for them to do this report for which somebody else has to deem whether or not it's significant and whether I can take this thing down or not.
This is our classic, our classic problem is.
Yeah, it is, it's a, it's pretty, it's versus preservation.
Good people do good things.
Yeah.
Do the right things with buildings that should have the right things done to them.
Right.
You know? That's what we're, what we're after.
We're right back where we were yesterday. So typically it's only significant if it's an outstanding example of a style or period of history. A significant person or event is associated with that.
As far as demolition goes, we already have the, the provision in the, in the general plan. I mean, in the introduction, it, it refers to C O S dash eight G's and I don't have that with me, but I, it, 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 it doesn't cover alterations, but it does cover demolition. So we can't, we have to be consistent with the general plan and I think it has the seventy-five years in it.
Web policy?
But, but it's how you determine whether every seventy-five year old building is not significant.
But if the general plan says that every seventy-five year old building is significant, we're stuck.
But it does, but it doesn't, I'm sure. No, nobody in their right mind would, would create that situation because every seventy-five year old building is not significant.
Can you, can you look up, Gina, can you look up a, a?
I'm on it.
C O S A T.
Yeah, because the, the quick fix, uh, depending on what the finding is, would be to put significant after any, uh, uh, between any and structure in, uh, A. So we're not just talking about any structure, we say it's any significant structure. And then in that particular scenario, we start looking at what is the historic value? Uh, was it someplace that was built by a known pioneer of the county? Uh, was it something, somewhere somebody lived in that was important in the history of the county and so on and so forth?
Usually it says any, um, any building or project that is eligible for listing on.
On the historical site, right.
Local, state or federal.
Right.
Local register, federal, historic register.
Yeah. So if it's not on the site, and I have a listing of those properties, if it's not on that site, are we, are we really bothered about and not allowing it to be demolished?
See what our, exactly what the wording is in the general plan.
Okay. I think the word significant might be there.
Then if we do significant alteration to any significant structure, we could, every other word.
Eligible structure, not a significant structure.
Right.
Something that's eligible that's not.
Yeah.
I know. Whoops.
It's a very complicated thing.
Okay. Adopt a cultural resource management ordinance to include the following. Implement the Mills Act, establish county register of historic resources, utilize the California State Historical Building Code, require cultural resource studies prior to demolition of seventy-five buildings, seventy-five years of age or older, and establish criteria for.
Curation.
That, that doesn't define.
Yeah, it doesn't say.
So it's saying flat out, we have to.
We're stuck to that.
We have to have the study done if it's seventy-five years old.
Right, but my question is.
Take alteration out?
Yeah, I would take alteration out and do a separate.
So do we want, do we wanna do this in the zoning code or are we wanting to create a, a separate resource management ordinance?
I think maybe in here, we just say pursuant to this general plan section that a study is required prior to demolition of any building seventy-five years or older until such time as we have something more specific.
So take alteration out?
Yes, and take alterations out. Or we could say demolition or significant exterior alteration.
Well.
Yeah, cause I, I, I think the exterior is actually the main issue when it comes to changing historic structure. Look at the armory, you know, the armory's got modern kitchen inside of it and, you know, it's still.
Then we're back to defining significant.
Yep, and so I think significant exterior alteration does not include routine maintenance, component replacement.
So if we wanna keep it consistent with the general plan, then I think we should just say demolition.
Well, no, we can be consistent with the general plan by adding other things.
Mr. Lett, I think the question would be if we just say, doesn't include these things, does that mean anything that's not those things is significant?
Yeah. That's that.
It'd be a long list then.
Well, no, I mean, yeah, I mean.
I think we have to develop this.
Right.
In the interim, we can keep it simple and say a significant exterior alteration and leave it to the planning director to determine whether that, that is significant.
You're gonna be awfully busy making interpretations.
Again, I just wanna remind the commission that we want to keep these determinations, I think, ministerial. So we have to, like, kind of thread the needle when it come, we do need, we need to, in order to, to make it clearly ministerial, we have to at least give some set of choices or set of standards before just significant.
Because then we're right back to just, you know, one individual and, oh, I'm feeling generous today or maybe I'm not in a good mood and, you know, I, I don't wanna deal with this right now, so. Very subjective.
But if we do, if we do say it does not include routine maintenance or component replacement, at least give some framework.
Yeah.
Decision. You know, I'm, I'm thinking, new windows, okay, that would be component replacement. The, the metal roof is replaced by a metal roof. That's, that's component replacement.
I mean, do you wanna say architecturally is significant? I don't, I mean, I'm asking.
Then we, I think we're rolling back into needing guidelines then.
That is the issue though.
That's the gist of it. But, but, okay, so you have a Mickey Mouse mural on the side of the house. I mean, you know.
Because we, as part of that management plan, I think you're gonna develop all those details. I don't think we need to. I'm, I think Julie's architect saying prior to the demolition or.
Significant exterior.
Alteration. Architecturally significant alteration to the exterior.
I don't, architecturally, I'm not.
Yeah, I know, that's kind of.
I think, I'd say significant exterior alteration.
Yes, that's fine. I, I, I think that would be okay for right now and then you're, if it's questionable, then you're gonna have to go get the study done. So.
So are we defining significant alteration to exterior?
Significant exterior alteration is a compact way of saying it.
The, another, I'm just thinking, do you wanna list things that are exempt and then say if it's not exempt, you need a consult until we have the ordinance someplace?
So you're saying windows or roofing?
Well, I'm saying you could list.
Actually, windows and roofing would be a significant exterior alteration.
Or just me, or, or maybe, maybe the architect here could name the types of things, like specifically, that would require a consult before doing it. I don't know if that's.
I, I think it's so messy because it depends on the building. It has the building already been, had. Additions made to it that should come off.
Yeah. Right, I mean, I mean, even, you know, even if you talk about interior alterations, if you change the flooring, for example, you, you have a house that's built with a particular type of floor.
The interior's not ever gonna be.
Yeah.
There's also the AUP option.
Yeah, right. Well, but if we're already are gonna do this cultural resource study and that's required by the, I mean, that, that should take care of a lot of these concerns.
I'm selling my property at seventy-four years.
Yeah, well, I was just gonna say, two years from now, something built in nineteen fifty is going to be subject to this.
Yeah. But it is, but don't say change the general plan.
Yeah.
No, and I, I think that's fine. I just think we have to, the demolition is covered, we have to have it. So the alteration would be maybe alterations to, to the exterior of the structure. That is all, that are seventy-five, I mean, we need to say that we're only talking about things that are seventy-five years old on the exterior. They had a addition put on it in twenty twenty. They can alter that anytime they want. Not original historic structure anyway.
That could be under, under subsection C that defines significant exterior. We don't have to put all that wording in, in that.
Yeah, so that.
So for purpose of this section, significant exterior alteration does not include alterations that are.
Less than seventy.
Yeah, alterations to portions of the building that are less than seventy-five years.
Yeah, exactly. Do we need to do a little more research on this?
Nothing easy.
Well, you know, my, my, it's really not a concern, but perhaps we want to establish a consistency between what we're putting here and what might end up being in our historical ordinance. Because we have to, based on the general plan, we have to create one. And part of doing that would mean we, we would have to have a board of experts, you know, that would identify, the, the, that would, well, not identify, but that would deliberate on some of these things that we're discussing, external, exterior renovations, interior renovations, bringing some kind of a sense as to what the level of, of regulation should be. So that would be the only concern. I'm not opposed to having it here, but that if we keep it here, we have to make sure that we adopt an ordinance that is consistent with what we already have here.
And I think you could, you could take this section out and, and.
And put it in.
Put it in the.
Right, that's, that's the other option.
Or this would reference that.
Yeah, that's the other option.
That exists. Aren't you working on an ordinance right now?
Oh, yes. Yeah.
So maybe we should be looking at that, just to see the draft of that, to see what kinds of things are addressed in there and see if we can find any guidance from there that we could use in here as a placekeeper. Knowing we'll have to come back and update it at some point.
Okay.
But I think that even the conditional use permit required needs reworking because the conditional use permit should be required if it's determined that the building can, cannot be demolished and will be altered. But if they determine it's not significant, then they shouldn't have to.
They shouldn't have a CUP.
Permit to do the work.
But we're, we're still stuck with the general plan about the demolition.
Right, that's fine. I, I don't think we're saying, I think we're just trying to figure out how to, just like what you were saying, the significant exterior alteration.
So we want to, we wanna continue to include significant exterior alterations.
And then find.
And then somehow define what those are, which again, Tim? Slowly?
Only applies to components at least seventy-five years old.
Oh, okay.
But I think it's gonna take more than that to rework this.
Probably, yes, but at least give an idea.
I agree with that.
It's a placeholder.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, um. Do we wanna take just a quick little break?
Sure. So we'll come back at eleven.
Eleven?
For another hour or so and then take a lunch break.
How reasonable.
Oh, I know.
I know.
Alrighty, and.
Gina, is your light?
Talk about density bonuses.
My light's on.
Oh, it's on, from here.
It's not very bright.
It doesn't seem like it is, but I can hear you pretty well, so.
I don't need a microphone anyway, so I've been told.
It's so nice and quiet. We should pop fast while they're taking their break.
Yeah. Well, we asked that to pause while we do.
Now, I really like the fact Martha was saying that where there's gonna be definitions somewhere, there'll be an online, you'll have that underlined and you click on that. Remember what I'm talking about?
Oh, all the hyperlinks?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it looks as though that we have the capability, so we just have to figure out, you know, where we want them and we'll include them wherever we can.
Yeah, I think just about anywhere where there is a definition somewhere else.
Right, right, yeah. If we're, if we're referring to another section of code, then we'll, and I think that's the key, is you've gotta reference the section.
Yeah.
After I went back and looked at it, it looked to me that you can only hyperlink internally to the zoning code, like we can't hyperlink out to government code section.
Oh, no, no, you're right. Only within the county code.
Well, that would be great.
Yeah.
Yes, and only within the zoning code. It didn't even link to.
I was.
Although it looks like we should be.
I was pretty sure, cause I, what I did was I went through other sections of code and it, and if I recall, they hyperlink to other sections. I didn't really go through the zoning code to see if that.
Section and noticed that there were no hyperlinks when it was outside of the zoning code itself.
Yeah.
Like it didn't go to another piece of county code.
Yeah.
But it might be able to and they just didn't.
Cause I did find that in other codes.
Okay.
In other county code sections.
What brought that up right now was under section C, when it talks about incentives and or concessions, whether that's defined in the government code or not. So that any qualified land transfer under government code section so and so shall be eligible to apply for a density bonus, including incentives and or concessions, incentive requirements, et cetera. You know.
Yeah, it'd be nice if they could, but I'm not sure that.
Yeah.
I don't think there's.
If it can't be, well, then we should actually put in here including incentives and or concessions as those terms are defined in section such and such. So that people know where they, where to go.
It says as described in.
Yeah. California Government Code Section blah, blah, blah.
Well, consistent with the requirements, provisions, and obligations set forth in it. Okay, anyhow, people that are interested in, ought to look to that government code section.
So do we have?
It's pretty good if I'm going directly to those sections, like clip them out of here and put them in there.
So, any comments on density bonus? Do you need a few more minutes?
To me, like it's what we're required to do.
I think maybe at the very end, the last couple of lines at the last part. And the applicant shall agree to an appropriate method of assuring the continued availability of the affordable density bonus units.
Affordable?
Well, well, okay, the, the heading of the section is continued affordability.
Okay.
And it, it's the density bonus units that have to be affordable, so it seems like that's a.
That's, okay, excessive?
Yeah.
So I've gone over the line already, so. It was nice while I lasted.
Okay, so, we can talk about setbacks?
Yeah.
I have a question about A, eaves and overhangs. Eaves, overhangs, and similar architectural features may project up to one-third the required setback.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'm sure that's taken from the building code, but that, that's not a setback and it's a fire clearance issue in the building code. And if our setback is twenty feet, is your intent to really allow a third of that to be encroached into with a humongous cantilever?
So where, where, where I have seen that type of language, it's usually in the side yard areas.
Yeah.
Yes, but if you have a twenty-foot setback, if you're.
You could say one-third of the required setback.
A twenty-foot side yard is not typical of, in the county.
Yeah, I think she's saying though, it's not specific to side yards, so that lies the question, do we want?
Can be, even if it's a ten-foot setback, is your intent to allow them to, to be?
Why not, why not one-third of the required setback up to X feet?
Well, I, I just think, and setbacks are sometimes set by homeowners associations and sometimes they're larger than what the county setback is and it just seems like, I'm, I'm not sure that this is.
Well, I mean, I, I, I don't know how that.
Why, why don't we?
So what are your suggestions?
You have a limit of.
I, 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 what I've seen is the, the setback is actually specified. So let's say a fireplace, for example. What would that projection for a fireplace be? I've seen it as much as maybe two or three feet. So if we said in a typical five-foot side yard setback, you can encroach up to three feet of, of, of that side yard.
Yeah, wouldn't be.
Yeah, it wouldn't be that, yeah.
But it's not a typical five.
No, it's not.
Side setback in Calaveras County.
Right.
Right.
A lot, that would be typical in the Bay Area where you have subdivisions at.
Are you proposing to set it up as a footage instead of a percentage?
I, I'm wondering if, if that's what, yeah, I'm just trying to say.
About both. What I was suggesting was it's, it, the, up to one-third of the required setback.
Not to exceed.
Yeah, not, not to exceed.
X number of feet.
Two feet, three feet.
Because eaves, cantilevers, fireplaces, they extend more than five.
Fireplaces are not usually allowed within. Fireplaces are not usually allowed within that. Something, it's usually only something that hangs out like an eve.
Right.
Or sometimes a second-story cantilevered area.
Yeah.
You know?
I mean, do those extend more than five feet in a, in a typical set?
So they're, they're going to be limited by the building department, fire clearances when you have a five-foot setback anyway, that's going to limit them.
What about my suggestion?
To say however many feet?
Well, well, the, 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 the limit is one-third, not to exceed blank feet.
I, I think that's fine, I.
So then you don't have your ten-foot eve and this sort of thing. So what?
Because then they would still have the option of if they want to encroach further, then they could request other types of methods of alleviation.
Well, they're not gonna be able to because it's, they're gonna be limited by the wooey stuff, most likely. And I, I, it doesn't matter to me, I'm just wondering what I was envisioning cuz I looked at it and I envisioned a humongous cantilever sticking out.
Good.
But a third of twenty feet is six.
Yeah.
Yeah, so not to exceed blank feet, what it was, two feet, three feet?
Usually it's, it's usually gonna be.
What's a, what's a normal eve?
A normal overhang? So on production housing, it's usually twenty-four inches, but it could easily be three.
Three, okay.
Yeah, so three feet.
Not to exceed three feet?
Sounds good.
That sounds funny to me. A lot of places don't allow any. That, that seems reasonable.
A one C talks about landscaping. And I don't think we have a definition, at least here, as far as what landscaping is. Later on, we have a whole section of landscaping, so do we want to refer to that section? Uh, when we talk about landscaping here, we're talking, people have trees.
Landscaping defined in our definitions?
In, in our landscaping section.
Are we looking up that right now, the landscaping, Gina?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Cuz I was.
What is the?
Talk about me as well.
Landscaping, okay, page twenty-three.
Twenty-three?
Yeah, and, and there we have the problem that we talked about, still apply to all landscape projects without a definition.
Don't really have.
Yeah, no, I was looking for the definition.
Don't really have a definition.
Oh, in our old definitions, yeah.
Well, the ones we were, been working with from in here, I didn't see anything.
So at some point, we have to define what landscaping or landscaping.
It's only living plants.
We don't have, we probably don't have the landscaping ordinance. What we have is this ordinance that requires us, I think it's a state.
Muilo, yeah.
Yeah, so we are, I think, one of the things I think we need to do is adopt a landscaping ordinance that basically addresses what we want percentage-wise between trees and shrubs and ground cover and things of that nature. At least that's standard in most communities.
I think we wanna require landscaping in the traditional sense necessarily on every parcel. Again, if you're in Tamarack, you are not going to landscape your front yard in the traditional way.
Right.
So.
I mean, where it applies.
So.
In, in, in typical subdivisions, like, you know, the ones you're on in Copper, if you don't have any landscaping guidance, what do they do with their front yards and side yards and so on and so?
I think it's that, that's why we need a definition of landscaping to allow for natural landscaping because there are places in which landscaping will not survive a single year.
I have no landscaping on a two-point-seven acre parcel, but it's native bed. I keep the fires safe and then there's native vegetation.
Yeah, maintain native vegetation.
Fire trees, mulch, you know, what is like, I think that's why we just need a definition of landscaping. Which I think is what Tim was trying to get to in the first.
Right, right, I mean, it's, it's.
Yeah, and it may be actually defined in muilo, in the model water.
Yeah.
Efficiency.
Well, we can look.
Ordinance.
Anyhow, for the setback, then, I mean, landscaping could be a six-foot tall hedge.
Sure.
Right.
Anything keeping it from being a ten-foot tall hedge.
So there's a lot to take in with the, with that muilo, with that ordinance from the state. And, and there is no defined, you know, unlike now where we, we say five percent of the land devoted to structures and parking has to be landscaped with new landscaping, blah, blah. You know, we've eliminated that and basically just kind of put together some basic framework that, that points right back to the, to the ordinance, the state ordinance, um, which in my opinion is very convoluted. But it does include, it does include hardscape, um, so. Um, you know, we'll see if we can't bring that back to you and get some additional information on the, on the muilo information. Um, I'll see if I can't download the ordinance and provide that to you so you have a better understanding of what all of this means.
Also, probably coming in our next code is gonna be a requirement for five feet of hardscaping or gravel adjacent to the walls of, uh, buildings within, while the interface areas. So you, you won't be able to require landscaping, you know, right up against a building.
Mm.
Yeah.
So, but like you said, it allows for hardscaping as part of that, so that may not be an issue at all.
Right, right.
Would, would succulents survive in this environment?
Insurance companies, insurance companies are not allowing you to charge more if you have vegetation next to it.
Right.
So where I live, I've been told, put rock or ground because it's gonna be an excessive charge.
Whoa, wow.
Everything I see.
Even if you put succulents in there? Wow, okay. Under D, fence and walls are allowed to encroach. Gina, do we, do we need to, um, put a, a, a height limit on what we're allowed to encroach into setback areas when it comes to walls and, and, and fences?
Um, we can, we can subject those to a building permit, which, you know, puts, puts a, puts a height limit on them already, um.
A building permit does?
Well, yeah, so if you need a building permit, then the wall is what?
Six feet.
Four feet or higher, and if it's a fence, then it's six feet or above, right, Michelle?
To, it, yeah, you, you can have a five-foot fence or a six-foot fence without getting, or up to a six-foot fence.
Without a permit.
Yeah.
Permit, walls. Depends what a wall is and.
I mean, retaining walls could be, retaining walls could be taller than four feet.
Yeah, but not though of the net, right?
Not without a permit.
Yeah.
But I think this is, what they're talking about here is this things you need to get your walkway or your driveway or whatever coming through. For the walls, arbers. I'm not sure that, um, arbers and trellises would typically be allowed within a setback yard and certainly not within a side yard area because they would provide a path for fires.
There, you will usually find them in, in a front setback, especially arbers.
Right, in a front setback, but not.
Right, in a side yard.
Those.
Yeah.
So you wanna limit certain, um, certain features to only, um, fronts, front and rear setbacks and not exclude the sides?
Well, you can't put a wood structure from your wood fence to your house. They fill that five feet and then the neighbor does it and now you're connected.
Okay.
So I, I think it maybe it could just be a reference to, um. Everything starts so complicated.
I know.
Soon as you start trying to describe every condition. I guess it's subject to applicable requirements of the building code, so maybe that takes care of it.
Okay.
Everyone okay with H?
Um, how about F?
F?
Pool equipment.
Mechanical equipment?
Yeah, it doesn't, it says such as.
Heating and air conditioning units and generators?
Do I wanna call pool equipment as well?
Pass in the allowed approach.
Heating and air conditioning units?
Do you wanna put pool equipments, do you wanna name that specifically, or is that assumed?
Uh, no, the pool equipment we've said has to stay, is not allowed to encroach into setbacks. Which, maybe, Michelle, you can kind of shed some light on that, always, so we allow swimming pools up to five feet. Um, from, say, say you've got a rear twenty-foot setback, we'll allow a swimming pool up to five feet from the rear property boundary, but this, the, the pool equipment cannot encroach into that twenty-foot building setback, it has to be set outside, and I'm assuming that's for noise?
Noise. A lot of times, pool equipment's inside of a pool potentially.
Yeah, and I think, I think current code is.
Whoa.
Referencing like exterior pool equipment, I don't think it's relative to something that is either underground or within.
I mean, we're allowing generators, genera-.
Right.
Generators are, generators are noisy.
Generators can be noisy.
So if it's, if it's a noise issue, pool equipment should be allowed to, uh, to stay in there as well.
So I would think the pool equipment would be, but I would think everything that, um, heating, air conditioning units and generators would still have some kind of minimum setback because you have to get access around them to service them and you don't want them right up against the neighbors, particularly if you were to have two generators back to back with fuel in them.
Thirty-six inches from property boundary?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, cuz that's what I try to do when we have a condensing unit. Cause you don't want that condensing unit right up against the neighbor's fence. Just cuz you're trying to get it away from your.
Okay.
So what's the resolution?
Uh, no more than three feet from the property boundary?
No, less than three.
I mean, yeah, sorry.
Yes, you had it.
Sorry.
And I don't, on the pool thing, I, I agree with Gabriel that it seems like it should have the same requirement.
It's a.
I think we can address that in the, um, do we have swimming pools exemptions?
Because, I mean, pool equipment could be locate, uh, located separate from, from the pool itself, and they usually are. Uh, you know, you find a pool equipment in the side yard and not necessarily within the setback zone of the swimming pool itself, so that's, that's kind of.
We might call out, I'm wondering if we call out swimming pools under the, maybe the variance or the waivers.
I see there's something in there called swimming pools and spas, sixty-five feet.
Where at?
It's in another section.
Seventeen, go one, one-twenty, it's on page seventeen.
One, one.
It calls out five feet.
Okay.
That's for the pool itself, though.
The pool itself, but I'm saying we can include.
Equipment, yeah.
We can include the equipment.
Maybe that's where you put it.
So swimming pool and.
Apply with the standard setbacks of the zoning district right now for the pool equipment.
Right.
But I would think you could, it could be closer than that.
Yeah, I, I mean, since we're.
Would you just make it?
What section are you under? You said page seventeen?
No, I think it was page eighteen.
Oh, cuz I'm like, I don't see it. Oh, okay.
Pool or spa-related equipment. So I'm not sure why it needs to be further apart than the mechanical equipment. But we should probably address propane tanks. So they have their own required setback.
They do.
Because there's an LPG code for them, depends on the size of the tank and whether it's above ground or under.
So do we need to have anything in here?
Well, we might just.
Refer to it.
Yeah. Typically, they allow a propane tank in the front setback all the way right to the property line because.
Well, it certainly makes it easier for fill, filling up.
Exactly. But you don't want them just right next to the side because your neighbor could have one and then that makes too much propane.
Right next to the front visually is not beautiful.
No, but then you can reverse screening of anything visible from the front.
Good.
I would think that same thing would apply to your generator and your mechanical equipment in, if it's in the front and it's encroaching into the setback that issue, it could have a requirement for screening.
Further away?
Yeah. So A. Safe access to sloped areas. Again, I think that you can allow structures in the side yards, that eat up side yards, they're small because then you can't have access with fire department to get by. It's the same issue we had with that tram question. Or we need to say that maintain the three feet of clear ice.
Three feet on either side wouldn't be enough for the fire.
Well, but you only have five. Whatever it is, but you have to have at least a number of.
Well, do we wanna put a clarifier then? As long as they don't impede, uh, access, um, total access to the side yard? Cuz I, I can see how somebody could actually read this section and say, whoa, I can have staircases or, or, or other things inside the side yard, but then it's gonna be a, a foot from, uh, so, yeah.
And you wouldn't allow that?
Absolutely.
And the building code wouldn't allow it.
Yeah, so we, we have to, we have to put a clarifier. Yeah. So we, we have to, we have to put a clarifier, uh, in there, I think. Not to, uh, not to, um.
It says subject to. Or may, or maybe just at the top where it says allowed encroachments and required setbacks that it would say that, they shouldn't, they can't encroach into a side yard or that you have to maintain a minimal of some clearance in the side yard.
Or can't, can't impede access into a side yard for service or emergency purposes, something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Can't impede access into the side yard for service or emergency purposes.
But would that, would that mean you had to drive a fire engine?
Yeah. No, isn't our setbacks don't even allow driving it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that the main thought with the, uh, regarding the safe access was, um, primarily up in the, up in the, um, higher country where, you know, a lot of the parcels are very steeply sloped and we get a lot of, unfortunately, a lot of variance requests for pandex. Um, just to get some sort of, you gotta get access to the house.
Exactly.
And that's the only way that they can do it, so, um.
So should we limit that to front?
You could just start the whole thing by saying
Mm-hmm.
in sloped areas. I mean, if, if we're only talking about sloped areas, uh, in H, might, we ought to make that clear at the start.
Well, maybe Michelle's got a good point. Limit it to the front setback only.
Cause that's the only place it really applies.
Right. Otherwise, you can design the house around all those other features. If you know you need a deck on the side to access a side door, so you design the house not to encroach. That's simple.
Yeah.
But it happens all the time up country in the front.
Yeah, the front is, okay. So we want it, we wanna limit that to the front setback?
I would. Cause otherwise, why would we have setback?
Right.
And let your building.
So what's the language or?
I don't know, we'll come up with something.
You'll come up with something. But is that entire H, is it only covering sloped areas? I mean, cause it, it, right now, it's the tail and it seems to me it should be the.
Then I think you're gonna get into the defining, the slope. I mean.
Well, yeah, but I mean, it has provide safe access in sloped areas.
Cause I think that, that we're all envisioning the same thing, the front where it falls off immediately. It goes straight up and you have to do something.
Right.
Right. So you got your house setback twenty feet, but you can't get to the house without putting in a pandec. That's the scenario we're talking about. Or you got those other steep lots where you've got, you know, a, a parking area up on top and you've got retaining walls and a series of stairs that goes down to the house that's set twenty feet back.
My point is, is that we have this, at the very end of this section, it said in sloped areas. If that's what we're talking about, we should have it at the beginning. In sloped areas, parking decks, blah, 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 blah. And with safe access, period. I, I just wasn't clear to me why the planning director, does he only get involved when it's in sloped areas? Well, if so, let's put it at the front.
Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna look at landscaping, we're gonna look at propane tanks, we're gonna look at screenings required in the front for mechanical equipment. And we're gonna look at H and C have to reword it to make it clear that it's really front setbacks on steeply sloped lots or something.
Okay, back up and start over. I wanna. I picture you're, I was thinking you were gonna.
I, this is what.
I just wanna make sure.
As people talk, so we need to define landscaping.
Right.
Place. It seems like that's easy. That we haven't, that we need to talk about mechanical equipment, including pool and spa, right? Same sort of requirements there that, that we need to reference the requirements for propane tanks. And that if people are placing mechanical equipment, generators, propane tanks in the front yard, they potentially need screening of some kind. And then that we're really only talking about the front setback when we're talking about ensuring safe access on steeply sloped parcels. Did I miss anything?
I don't think so. So we wanna include the propane tanks in that mechanical equipment section?
I think it might need its own because it has different requirements. I think we just wanna reference that code. It's not actually in the building code. It has its own code.
Would, uh, on H, would we wanna include rear setbacks in addition to front setbacks? Building may not be pointing toward the back.
Which kind, what?
H.
Yes.
Where we're, we're, we're gonna limit it to front setbacks.
Mm-hmm, right.
Should we include rear setbacks or back setbacks, whatever the term is? Because maybe the access is from the back.
I don't think so because you're required access to the front.
No. The back would, yeah, yeah.
Such a benefit having an architect.
Maybe you can design around it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess unless the, the only legal access was from the back.
Yeah, well, that's what I think.
But it's from wherever your legal access is, right?
Yeah.
And then we call that the front.
The front. That's right.
I'm happy to see that this stream of wetland setbacks are now in here.
Yeah, I'm wondering under B two, when we're listing, uh, the, the various, uh, things that this can be related to. After storm drainage, should we have a separate thing for flood control or a storm drainage? Cover all that? I just didn't see any specific thing about flood control.
Are you thinking like a lab?
Uh, I'm, all I'm thinking is, I don't, I don't know exactly what I'm thinking. Flood, flood control is certainly something that we're concerned about when we're talking about streams. Yeah, okay, maybe a levy.
So.
Wall, maybe.
Typically, they won't. Depends on FEMA, they're not gonna let you put something in there.
You can't, strict.
Right, exactly.
Okay, all right.
But I don't, but this, it might not necessarily be the same thing.
Mm-hmm.
So it could say something like flood control elements allowed by.
allowable flood control.
Yeah, something like that. Because you can get a permit to do certain things. Just certain circumstances. I wonder if this is a question for public works. Who's doing up FEMA?
That would be us.
That, so who does it now that Deborah's gone?
That would be Maddie.
So maybe we should ask Maddie what it could say there.
Okay, so.
Cause I, I'm, reading through all of that stuff is a nightmare.
So we're talking about D?
So, um, B two, the exceptions.
Whether we should have something about flood control in there as an exception.
Like, oh, okay, could flood control elements be there?
From you.
And now, just because I forgot to say something about this back under A, where it says docks, docks permitted by TRIDAM authority. Is that the only place that docks are allowed in the county?
It's the only place where we have access to lakes that are regulated.
So we have other lakes in the county.
We've got, yeah.
Hmm.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't honestly think I've ever seen a permit for anything other than TRIDAM. Lake Tolic is usually the only place, but you're, you're, you're right. I mean, it could certainly be on Hogan or Maloney's or even.
There's not a lot of private property there, but. And I was thinking just ponds and things, but a lot of those are private ponds that are not really.
And I think this is just saying specifically docks permitted by TRIDAM are, well, I guess then you're saying that other e- entities like Maloney's would be under what Army Corps of Engineers.
Yeah, I was just gonna say TRIDAM or other agency having jurisdiction, just in case something was to come up.
Okay, that's good. Yeah.
How about, and can't you just say docks permitted by applicable authorities?
I think TRIDAM though is, is like next time, that's what it's gonna be.
Ready to get back into stream and wetland?
Yes, I'm sorry.
To immerse ourselves. Um, under A, uh, the, uh, the exceptions, drainage facility shall be designed to eliminate or minimize increases in the rate and amount of stormwater discharge. I'm assuming that's from the subject property that has the setback. And that seems to me to not be allowing any provision to keep that property from getting flooded. You with me on that?
Mm-hmm.
It, it, it sounds as if you have to build a dam to keep the water out of the stream, even if it's going to into your bedroom.
They're talking about retention basins, that kind of thing, like, things that slow down.
Yeah.
Instead of concentrating it.
I guess it was the eliminate or minimize.
So the, it's under the exceptions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How about, how about take out, eliminate or just to, to minimize increases?
Why, why would they not be allowed to eliminate an increase?
Well, just my concern is that, it, it's not that they, they, this is requiring them to be designed to eliminate or minimize increases in the rate of stormwater discharge. I'm, I'm assuming I'm right that we're talking about discharge from the property.
Yeah.
And it's, my, what I envision is that people's, uh, bedrooms are gonna be underwater because they can't, let the property on their, let the water on their property into the stream.
You can't build anything within that, but if you build something within it, it needs to be designed to eliminate or minimize that increase in the rate
Which is our.
of stormwater discharge. They're not telling you.
Key thing is the rate.
Did you, what, they're just saying you're not gonna be allowed to build it within the setback unless it's designed to protect the resource.
Okay, okay. So.
So if it's designed to protect, you don't put it in the fifty feet.
Put it in the fifty feet.
Yeah, you can do it up outside the fifty feet.
Oh, so relieved. She, she actually has such a problem with this.
I know.
It's nice to live on a ridge. Do we want to say or is it successive drainage facilities in the setback shall be designed? I, I've realized logically is not necessary, but for clarity.
I'd be fine with that if it, to make it read a little more clearly.
I think so.
Did you follow that? The Tim and Michelle confusing discussion.
I'm just adding in the setbacks, drainage facilities in the setbacks.
Yeah.
Shall be designed to eliminate and minimize increases. I can't read my own writing.
Oh, that's the comfortable part.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Well, the, the B, the vegetation should not be cut or removed except, and we're, again, we're talking for in the setback. It doesn't seem to have anything about, um, fire prevention. That, I mean, it's normal maintenance to facilitate drainage, prevent flooding, et cetera, et cetera. And the insurance companies want to be able to, um.
I think it's crazy. It's wetlands also. It's not just streams, it's wetland areas. Yeah, that's a. It's a good.
Exactly how you deal with that with, as far as. You don't wanna put it in an exception that's gonna end up destroying the, the rule.
Or as required to comply with required fire clearances or something.
No, a lot of them are not required. I mean, it can be required by your insurance company, but that's.
Yeah, required according to NAMI also. Thirty-four hundred.
Okay, okay. Well then, yeah, what would the language be? Have it put at the start, have an exception to the exception.
Maybe it needs work on the wording, but.
That's.
This is the, the typical problem is competing requirements.
Yeah, yeah.
So what do we wanna, what are we looking to achieve?
We're try, trying to include an exception that will allow, uh, removal of vegetation to comply with the required, like, wooey clearances. To reduce fuel. Which if it's truly a wetland, probably doesn't have anything in it that's a problem, but.
Sometimes if it's a wetland that isn't wet.
Yeah, well, yes.
Okay, we can probably come up with something.
That's, that's.
I'm sure Martha's probably dealt with that before.
Okay, moving on.
Anything on drainage and scenic easements? What Agrys holds her fuckers. Oh, yeah.
Subsection two. There's some questions whether intensive human use is a clear enough term.
What about residential habitable space?
Living quarters, whatever we call it.
Except we are covering the outdoor area.
I just wonder, is this something that when somebody comes in and says they wanna build a new home on a parcel adjacent to resource production? Do you actually check to see that that house would be three hundred feet away from wherever the activities are happening on the resource or just the boundary of a resource production?
It would be from the boundary.
Yeah.
Obviously, that's gonna be very easy to do with new subdivisions. It might pose some challenges with existing legal parcels.
Right.
But there is an option for an administrative use permit if in fact that they for some reason can't meet that requirement.
I just wondered if that's being done now.
No, this is new.
Okay.
No. No, this is.
Never said anything like that.
No, this is this is actually to implement policy of the general plan.
Right, the right to farm.
Yes. So this is new.
Okay.
So the ag buffers is a new section.
That's why I found it interesting.
Have you checked with the agricultural commissioner as to whether or not this is something that she can do? Because we we wrote some things into our greenhouse gas reduction plan for the agricultural commissioner, and it turned out if she did that, she'd lose most of her budget.
So we wanted to fix that.
So we changed that. Anyhow, we should check with the county agricultural commissioner.
Well, just like anything else, I mean, if you're adding a review to your process, then the reviewer should be able to collect some sort of a fee, so maybe it, I mean, maybe it's as small as twenty five dollars. I mean, we collect twenty five dollars for a for a business license, so I mean, there's always a a way to recover
No, but there's some, she's funded, I think, a lot by the state and but the state limits exactly what she what her duties can be.
Oh, so you're wondering if the review of such a request would be outside of her.
I I just think that.
Official duties.
Check with her about this.
Okay.
Yeah. I just don't know, like five hundred feet might not be enough if it's a pig farm. And if it, three hundred feet might be way too much for other, I just don't know.
Well, and I think that's why it's it's going to be, you know, subject to.
Isn't hasn't it always been kinda subject?
No, we don't, we don't have, we don't have this buffer.
Fifty foot setback from the old chicken ranch that used to be a thousand and fifty feet.
I mean, that might have been, I mean, that could have very well been mitigation as a result of the environmental document. I I don't know where that came from, but we don't currently have an agricultural buffer written into code right now, so.
And whether or not the county agricultural commissioner would be happy doing this, are we putting in too much discretion here as an administrative decision? The other relevant factors as determined by the agricultural commissioner, should there be more? Should we, if if she thinks that that this is something that's within her area, maybe she could provide some factors.
It's all depending on winds and all sorts of things.
Right.
That are moving targets. Literally.
Well, but.
I I honestly don't think there's gonna be.
It's not gonna come up very.
It's not gonna come up very often, and I I think I think the where we can really see this become effective is if we're actually reviewing a discretionary, say tentative subdivision map. You know, if we're reviewing that application and we know that this scenario exists, then they can they can factor these setbacks, so to speak, into their their subdivision design. I mean, it might be a little, obviously, a little more difficult for those parcels that are already created that didn't take this into consideration, but I would say the likelihood of the probably the numbers of of parcels that are already created that aren't developed are probably very few. I'm not saying it's not going to affect some of them, but we'll just have to take it on a case by case.
I'm trying to raise a concern that our legal counsel, being was concerned about, and that is, we're on page fourteen, the buffer size. And talking about other relevant factors as determined by the county agricultural commissioner.
Okay.
And whether that would provide her the agricultural commissioner with too much administrative discretion.
Yeah, I think in order to keep things reliably ministerial, we we have to sort of thread the needle between having standards that are set enough that they're similar to, for example, what the building official has as far as discretion and and issuing or not issuing a permit. When it gets to be where they can be creative and exercise judgment and come up with conditions using their expertise, that's where things start not being deemed ministerial. So, you know, there's a choice and kind of a policy.
But if we're considering that, it's already an administrative use permit, so they either have to meet the requirement. If they can't meet the requirement, then they have to apply for an AUP.
True.
Which is then, in fact, discretionary.
That is true.
Yeah.
I wasn't looking at that.
Yeah, there's.
But that, but that it may be adjusted. I don't know, so you can provide one official with broad powers to come up with relevant factors as long as it can be reviewed with an administrative use permit by another official?
Cause CEQA has to be part of it, that's what.
Right, I mean, so with an administrative use permit, you are doing site specific review, and it is relying on the expertise of the planning director, but the planning director still has to consider whether CEQA applies, whether the project is exempt, and if it applies, there is an appendix G checklist.
Right.
That he would have to go through and do an initial study and mitigate accordingly.
And he could always get input from other county departments as part of that.
Oh, we always do. I mean, that's part of our process is to engage other departments and other agencies, both within and outside of the county governmental jurisdiction.
Here, I I don't wanna take more time than's necessary. We've got a kind of a strange situation here where one determination is made by one official. And then the this buffer requirement, which is the the size of the buffer separation, may be adjusted with administrative use approval, but the planning director determines, et cetera. Do we need?
I I, you know, I.
It's a.
Relevant factors thing is what's bothering me.
I, you know, I do, so what the intent, Gina, does, was it supposed to be that prior to us determining whether an AUP applies, the agricultural commissioner has to make a separate judgment be about the buzzer, the buffer size?
Yeah, it's.
That is the problem.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Five hundred is the problem. If we just said shall be a minimum of.
Okay.
Five hundred feet, then all the rest of it could could be under the AUP.
Okay.
Taking into consideration.
Okay.
That's what you're trying to do.
Is that what the, okay.
Yeah.
But then, well, it's not just creating the fee, cause then it says depending, oh, right, we'd have to take out depending.
All move into the other category.
Yeah, which the other categories are kind of aping what was said before, so.
Then the question is, what do you use as that first threshold?
Right.
So we set the buffer, not a range, the buffer.
Yes.
If they can't meet the buffer, then they have the ability to apply for an AUP for which then the planning director has the ability to consult with the ag commissioner based on all this other criteria, is it reasonable of whatever they're asking for?
Yeah. So take the agricultural commissioner out of the first part and leave the commissioner in with consultant consultation.
That would say that we would want to keep the five hundred foot, and I just wondered what the source for that was or if that number needs to be that large.
Four hundred looks like a Solomon-like decision.
But yeah, me too, but I don't know enough about it, so.
No.
So are we saying that we wanna change?
The the set first number.
Setback to, okay, so from three hundred to four hundred. Uh, get rid of the range.
Yes.
Up to five hundred feet. Period.
Period.
Yes.
And the buffer requirement may be adjusted.
You you know. Odor is an issue, so.
Well, there's there's a lot, so it's it the primarily, it's primarily to hopefully prevent complaints
Yeah.
of adjacent properties about the agricultural operation. So, you know, in theory, we're thinking if you're if you're setback from that ag operation, there's gonna be less reason to complain about things like flies and smell and noise and odor.
Yeah, I just wondered like where the three hundred to five hundred came from, and it's just something that's been used somewhere else, and what do we? Put as that?
Arbitrary almost, because really odor travels more than three and five hundred feet through.
Right, well, I think it was meant to be, I think we're trying to be somewhat flexible depending on the ag operation. I mean, if you're if you're running, you know, say fifty head of cattle on, you know, a thousand acres, that's pretty insignificant. But if you've got fifty acres and a hog farm.
Chickens.
I chickens. You've really got an issue with chickens, don't you? So, I mean, it's that's an example, I'm saying, depending on what it is and the proximity of the ag operation, there may be a need for more buffer than.
But it could change.
It could change.
And you're telling.
You're right, it could change.
Adjacent property.
You're right, so. Maybe the, yeah, poultry industry takes a dive and you lose all your birds and you, you know, you don't want to continue that, so then you start running sheep.
Right, so.
Or you plant walnuts.
But that guy's already built his house next door.
Right, right.
So is he.
Yeah, you're absolutely, you're absolutely correct. The ag operation doesn't need to, I mean, look at all the farms, you know, orchards. They're constantly ripping those trees out and something else is going in. Maybe it's vines, maybe it's row crops.
Yeah, so is is four hundred feet a reasonable number to just?
Yeah.
We wanna give people something they can do without having to go through that.
Right.
Use program.
So shall be four hundred feet, period.
Yeah.
And then it can be adjusted, which could be adjusted either way.
Right. Subject.
Who's gonna, who's gonna ask for more, huh?
I don't know that we'll have the ability to ask for more.
Okay, do we want to take?
Take a break?
Break for lunch now?
Yes.
Or can we want to do height exceptions, which looks pretty straightforward, and then we could take the break?
Oh, yeah, let's mark up another.
One sentence, can we get through one sentence and say?
Look, true.
I think we can because.
If this rolls into a forty minute discussion.
We've got the Michelle group on that already.
Places. I think this is probably fine, cause we're addressing the actual specifics of it elsewhere.
One question as far as lighting and illumination, is is this meant to be the night sky ordinance?
Yes.
Okay.
So.
It's it's meant to potentially cut off the need for a separate.
Yes, so if we need to do more, we can do more. If you want to call this the minimum and then come back with a more detailed ordinance, it's gonna be up to you, but this was our first shot at it, so.
That was all, I need to know that going in.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, when are we coming back?
What do we get, boss?
Should we try to be back by one o'clock?
I could do that.
Should we be back by one o'clock? Can we make it one ten? Please order one ten.
You're so cocky.
We're lighting and illumination.
I I I don't have a problem until we get down to exemptions. It seems to me that two main contributors to light in the sky public and private street lighting and athletic field lights. And they're exempt here, and it seems to me that there's no reason for that exemption if we have under. See, where are we? D two on page sixteen. We have a whole provision for outdoor light fixtures used for outdoor recreation facilities shall be fully shielded, et cetera, et cetera.
Um, we don't have, the athletic field lights at a public school campus.
Yeah.
We have no jurisdiction.
Right, that's what I was thinking.
So I think we'd have to distinguish that.
And and as far as the public and private street streetlights, they have evolved today that we can actually have public streetlights that respect a dark sky ordinance. They would have a hue to them of an orangish in in color. And they don't have to be as tall as they used to be, but there are ways to to exempt those if they met specific guidelines.
So with that being said, maybe they shouldn't be in exemption.
They could be in exemption.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Cause that's what they put in now.
Right, right.
The ones with the cutoffs on top.
Right.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
What I'd like to see is retroactive, cause some of those lights are really obnoxious.
Yeah. Mm hmm. And and I think there's a program that that allows for us to retroactively go back.
Start replacing those, yeah.
Yes.
Honestly, I don't know how some people sleep with those darn lights right outside their yard shining, I mean, it literally lights up their whole house.
Or the gates.
Yeah, it's crazy.
Right outside.
Yeah.
I'm lucky I don't have streetlights, but do we all agree that the public and private street lighting shouldn't be exempt?
Yes, take it out.
But it needs to be regulated.
Right.
And and also, some of the safety and security lighting, I don't think there's a standard. I've seen some safety and security lighting that is really obnoxious, and they go way beyond. And I don't know if we really want to exempt them. I mean, there are some that we might want to exempt, but on, go ahead, Michelle.
I just wanna go back and just say we should keep B, but we should just distinguish that it's a public school campus.
Right.
And I I think parks should still have to comply.
Yeah, I mean, why why not?
Oh, unless it's a park is part of a school.
Well.
Or state, like state.
I guess when you say parks, parks up here to me also include ball fields.
Yeah.
So you've got the veterans park in Valley Springs, which is ball fields, you've got the park right up here, which is.
But they should be under two B. But they should be under two B.
Right.
So, um.
So the only exemption should be a public school campus.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For that, that piece.
Okay.
Next, the safety and security lighting.
Under athletic fields?
Qualifier, it says public facilities. So I think public facilities could be exempt, but also privately owned properties with security lighting, they just go all the way. And it's really, really obnoxious in certain instances, but I, it's up to discussion.
I would think safety and security lighting would only be exempt for things like the jail or.
Yeah, well, the big glowing box. The big glowing box of superior.
But I mean, that's not all public facilities. That would only be specific.
Well, even there, I mean, you have to have it shining up. I mean, are they going to fly away?
Well, we don't have any jurisdiction again because it's, it's a whole different thing when you're.
Okay.
Okay.
When the state is, is involved.
Okay, so athletic field lighting should only apply to pri- uh, public school campuses?
You know.
Right?
We, we shouldn't even have to state exception, exemptions when it, when we can't do it. I mean, we're accepting them from our powers, but I, I, I think the public school campus.
But I think, I think that kind of reiterates that we don't have the authority.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's good.
Because, you know, I think a lot of people don't know that.
But, okay, so safety and security lighting for?
Public school.
No, safety.
We're, we're on, we're on.
Oh, oh, yeah. For public, for public facilities.
Retention facilities, whatever.
Well, or even like the police department, the department, they would want them, but if.
First responders, first responders, public safety.
Public safety.
Public safety facilities. I, that's what I was trying to get to.
Public.
Yes. Good job.
Okay, I'm sorry. Say that again.
I still don't understand why.
Safety and security lighting for public safety facility.
Safety facilities.
But then.
I think they should still try to comply, but.
Well.
Yeah, we're not doing, the following lighting is exempt from the provisions of this section so long as, you know, to the extent practicable, they try to minimize it or something like.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, Julie, one more time? Standards of the section applied, any?
The following lighting is exempt from the provisions of this section so long as illumination is minimized to the extent practicable.
Okay.
Does that work?
Well.
Except it wouldn't apply to a public school campus.
Yeah. But.
To the extent allowable by law, the following lighting is exempt from.
That would be fine.
Perfect. That's great. Well, except, I mean, okay, just look at public safety facility. I mean, if, if this law doesn't restrict it, they're exempt to the extent, I mean, it, it's kind of a dog chasing his tail sort of a thing.
Yeah. It's like, yeah, safety and security lighting, maybe it should be safety and security lighting as necessary for public safety.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not helping.
No, that's really what we're after.
Yes.
And if we said that, what's wrong with it?
Well, there could be security lighting necessary for public safety.
Except, well, and then the jewelry store is going to say, my giant obnoxious lights are necessary for public safety.
Yeah.
Well, we're still talking about public facility.
Public facilities.
Oh, okay, you weren't, you weren't trying to get rid of that, right? We're just trying not to say public safety and public safety and public safety.
Right.
So, security lighting necessary for public safety.
Security lighting necessary for public.
Or maybe, security lighting on public facilities necessary for safety. There we go again.
You got the idea, right?
This, this where you say that.
Yeah.
Okay, then, I, I don't have any problem until we're down at H. Temporary lighting for agricultural activities of a limited duration, and we need to put the limit in there of a duration less than three nights or.
Uh, it depends on how long harvest takes.
Yeah.
Because they do, summer when it's really hot, they like to harvest it at night.
Mm-hmm.
Almonds and grapes.
Grapes. Yeah, so they never know if it's three days or three weeks.
Yeah.
Also, what counts as an agricultural activity? Um, are we talking about those add-on harvest festivals? Are we just talking about what's necessary for the business of the agricultural business?
That says a business.
Business.
Well, agricultural activity.
Right.
Doesn't include those special events that occur on agricultural land because those aren't agricultural activities.
We have a definition that excludes that already.
Yeah.
We do.
Well, the definition.
Well, while we're done.
Agriculture.
Define agriculture. I mean, I, this is one of those issues, right, that comes up where people could take a very wide view of what counts as an agricultural activity. So if there isn't a definition, you might want to specify.
Gina's must be that down.
Don't we have a definition in the code for agricultural activity, Gina?
We define farm.
Yeah. So if it's, it's anything related to.
We define a farm, so.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make sure that we've got something. I have to go back and do a search and.
Temporary lighting for whatever we're going to say, as necessary for the agricultural function or whatever.
I think limited duration is.
Pretty self-explanatory.
Okay.
That's right.
What is the max? Is there an outer limit on the duration?
We're saying we can't say because it really depends on the harvest season.
Should we just say during harvest season?
Well, I don't know, they might have.
I don't know. I mean, they may be doing other things at night. I don't know. I mean, obviously, if you've got a great, you know, um, field that's all lit up at night and there's nobody out there, then that's going to cause a problem. But if you've got, you know, farm workers out there picking grapes, then that's a lot, that's.
I, I remember, I remember in high school, irrigating a guy's nectary orchard, could have been peaches. But we had to wait till the water came in.
Oh.
So we showed up before in the afternoon after work. Water didn't come in till midnight.
Oh.
Yeah.
And guess what? We needed to have light to be able to see what we're doing.
I'm only going to say, I guess I'm, here's my devil's advocate, the, the jerky lawyer, let's pretend there's a jerky lawyer. Okay, uh, yeah, and somebody has the lighting on for, you know, a year or two years. And they're saying, well, you know, they, and then the, the issue before the judge is what does of a limited duration mean? Something short of infinity? I mean, that's the only thing is that a judge could find that to be.
Call it season, seasonally limited.
Seasonally.
Seasonal.
All right, that's good.
Temporary lighting for seasonal agricultural activities of a limited duration.
Yeah, that's probably better.
And only as necessary to facilitate the required activity, whatever it is.
Yeah. You could say supporting agricultural.
Because it is true, they move irrigation at night sometimes.
Oh, yeah, because everyone's sharing the, the water as it comes in. So when we're done, the next farmer gets it.
Right, and that's two o'clock in the morning, it's two o'clock in the morning.
We don't have that up here. We're not lucky enough to have all that great ag water they have in the valley.
I wouldn't create it, I'll tell you that.
There is ag water in the gun, yeah.
Um, under prohibitions, uh, maybe I'm jumping the gun here. Um, I, I understand, can we just put advertising in front of searchlights? So it's very clear because, uh, the police department would, anybody who's reading in the code would say, oh, searchlights are prohibited until they see that it's only for advertising purposes. Public safety will use searchlights sometimes and, and we, we just want to call out specifically that the searchlights that are prohibited are advertising searchlights. So if you put advertising in front of the searchlights, then we don't have to worry about reading the rest of the, of that line. What does the planning commission think about that?
They don't have a problem with it.
I don't either.
Okay, good.
Got it.
That point one foot handle. That's an interesting thing because I've had some people who complain, contacted me to complain about lights from their neighbors. The lights from the neighbors are not shining on their property. So it's not that, but they can see the lights at their neighbors through their windows. They don't like that. I think it's just a messy, but this foot handle thing might help.
I think that would probably help because if you.
At least it's something you can actually measure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you just, you take a light meter there and it's more than one foot handle.
And then they're unhappy when I can't come to force, like, who am I? I'm not.
You could be, you want a job?
Come with your big cloak and sneeze.
We'll get you a badge. We'll get you a badge. You can be real official.
Yeah.
When we get to two, I think the, the question of what is fully shielded, I mean, that, that could be completely covered and you want to have a light. But we, we need some definition for fully shielded or partially shielded. I mean, I, well, I guess I don't really have a complete idea. Partially shielded.
I think it probably needs to be sufficiently shielded to prevent.
But how outdoor light fixtures, feature fixtures should be fully cut off? I mean, that's.
Yeah, and fully is a weird, I mean, we know what that means, but we don't really need fully included or fully cut off. Bless you.
Right. Shall only redirect it down. This, this has got to be something that other jurisdictions have handled. I, I wonder if we would just leave this to a little research. Um, and, and we could get around the problem by a definition that.
This, I believe she took from the, there's a.
Dark sky.
Dark sky, um, mo- or, uh, model of some sort.
And usually the full is the top.
And so when I asked her about, um, beefing up this section to be compliant with the dark sky, with the dark sky ordinance, quote unquote, um, this is what we came up with. This is what she came up with.
We just need a definition.
A definition for what?
A fully shielded.
And partially shielded.
Yeah, maybe we can do a, because I think we can get pictures of what a fully shielded light fixture is and what a partially shielded light fixture is. Maybe use those, yeah, use those as exhibits in.
If we get a definition of what fully shielded is, we probably don't need or fully cut off.
They're different things, even though they're. Do you have the same effect?
Both.
Yeah.
So keep in what we got, huh?
Well, let's, oh, I'm happy to look up and see the dark sky ordinance and look at if there is a fully shielded definition that we could use. Nice thick paper we have.
Well, there's a reason for that. When we print double-sided, the, the other less expensive or less, lesser quality paper gets jammed up in the coffee machine. So we got tired of it and we went to the, the heavier weight. And then we got a new machine, so I'm not sure if the.
Okay, so, um, just doing a grocery search, a fully shielded light fixture has a solid barrier or cap at the top of the fixture in which the lamp, uh, which, in which the lamp is located. And then, and there's a picture. So a fully shielded light is, doesn't allow light to protrude beyond.
From the job.
Right. And, and I think a partially shielded one may not have that top cover. Well, it might have side covers or something like that, so that's, that's the difference.
Top is always.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, could be. Did you just draw that?
I just drew.
No.
That's good.
A partially shielded.
We'll use that as an example.
Die, girl.
Okay.
All right.
I would get down to, uh, number four. It's just, this is a grammatical point. The A code required lighting, all that is, is a, is a subject. I think the whole thing will make sense if we say, if in the introductory paragraph, we say, and the lighting is not required for security, comma, except, then it makes sense. Otherwise, there isn't really a sentence here.
So the energy code already requires the timers or some other method of controlling the time with daylight and sensors and, and the step down requirements in commercial parking lots. And there are so many requirements now for this above and beyond what we have here. There's nothing matter of what we have here, but it's way more complicated than that. I think they're saying that unless, like, emergency lighting, code required lighting is exempt from those timers.
That's why I would suggest we say, comma, except.
Yeah, except.
It just needs to, it needs to be a sentence.
Um, so here comes the big question. If we have existing non-conforming light fixtures, how do we handle them?
By implication, they are just dandy.
They're just what?
They're just dandy.
Well, I mean, that's a concern for, that's a concern for us. So we get a complaint, you know, after this ordinance passes and somebody goes, oh, yeah, there's this thing, you know, behind my house and it's been, the light's been on for whatever and they don't meet current standards. What do we do about it? Are they, are they, are they, are they grad furthered in? Or do we have the authority to say you must comply with the new ordinance?
Well, under applicability, under B, they'd be okay as far as I see.
Yeah, so it's only going, going forward, anything going forward would comply with the code.
So do we want to say new or replaced outdoor light fixtures or systems?
Yeah.
Uh, actually, you could say new or replacement light fixtures, at least then when people replace something, the intention is for them to comply.
Yeah, well, what about replacing the bull?
So I just, everyone was asking the legal, for the legal standard. And again, when it comes to changing zoning regulations, the law requires a lot before it's considered an illegal taking. Okay, so there's, there's probably more we're allowed to regulate legally than what you would necessarily want to on a poli- for a policy point. So if we said there was a health, safety, welfare need to regulate lighting, even though. we're imposing on existing lighting, I don't think that lighting is like an entire use. We're not depriving anybody of full economic use of their property, so it's allowed to do that. So it's really up to you, uh, whether you would want to say that this is only for new or whether this would be enforceable immediately if it was for all lighting.
I think that for the last fifteen or twenty years, anytime it was discretionary, we actually applied this same sort of a rule to it, saying that it had to be shielded and the light couldn't leave your property and blah, blah, blah. So it's not really entirely true that anything that's existing and on compliant is safe and grandfathered in, because it, they may have already, they might already be doing something that they shouldn't be doing. But that's a lot of digging to figure out. I would think it would be perfectly safe to say new and replacement lighting. I think it would be a tough sell to go around and say, we're gonna drive around anytime we see a light.
And that's, that's the fear, is that all of a sudden, everyone's gonna be picking on their neighbor and turning him in for code violations. I mean, I, I'm thinking of the residential subdivision adjacent to my property, I mean, those houses were built back in the seventies.
Right.
So we already have that language for, in B, applicability. We already say the standards of this section apply to all new or replaced.
Right.
Outdoor lighting fixtures, unless you're listed in an exemption.
I, I think the question was, shall it be applied generally across the board to everyone, even existing? And, and I think, I think the county and, and even, you know, um, private road associations that have street lighting, I think they should take it upon themselves to, to try to make an effort to, to come into compliance with their, you know, by starting to replace some of these fixtures, because there are some really obnoxious street lighting out there. Um, whether or not you're gonna be able to get each individual residence to start complying is gonna be an entirely different matter, you know? You've got people on, you know, limited fixed incomes that can't necessarily afford to retrofit all of their.
If we were Pittkin County, Colorado, why we can say, well, we're gonna provide incentives.
Yeah.
Pay for the replacements.
Yeah.
I think we'd have the pitchforks and, uh, torches unshielded.
Unshielded.
If we went after it.
My burning torch. And, and we'll make sure that it's not cooler color than.
Yes.
Thirty-five, thirty-three thousand.
So no changes to, so no changes to, uh, applicability?
Yeah, I think, we're done with that.
I, I might in five, the Kelvin, I might say outdoor light fixtures shall not exceed thirty-five hundred Kelvin rather than three thousand. Thirty-five hundred's a pretty common.
Somewhat yellow.
No, the, the lower the number is, the yellower they are.
That's right, yeah.
So change somewhat. Change three thousand to thirty-five?
Yeah, I would, because thirty-five is a pretty common.
Oh, okay.
And still appears.
Right. Less intrusive?
It, yeah, it's like a, not different, not a different thing, it doesn't.
This is thirty-five hundred.
That's great.
You have to invert it, that's what I mean. You have to invert that diagram.
So, but if we change it to thirty-five hundred, by then, everything else is only five hundred less than that.
The five thousand is still fine.
Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. I thought you were reducing five thousand to thirty-five.
No, 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 I was saying all other outdoor light fixtures, though. The five thousand, I think, is.
Okay.
There's some outdoor lighting that's in that range.
Okay.
Sorry.
I wonder who's gonna review all the lighting? The photometric plans.
Mm-hmm. That was just my next question, because I remember.
Let's, let the director do it. Move on.
Uh, yeah, well, yeah, because I remember we had a, um, storage facility somewhere in, in Valley Springs, and they had to do a photometric, um, just to show, uh, the spread of the light and, and how it dissipates within, uh, from a distance. It doesn't take a lot of expertise to see something that's, you know, quite, you know, graphic.
Yeah, I've, I've seen them before and it's not.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it stands for commercial, and I see that it's, it doesn't apply to residential or only installed lighting. So that's, I think that's okay.
Are we going to do the swimming pool and spas? Are we gonna reference this section in the setback sections regarding pool equipment and stuff like that? Or how did we, how did we resolve that?
Do we wanna finish outdoor storage?
I think we better do, let's do outdoor storage.
Yeah, I, I thought.
Then, then hang on to that thought.
I do have a problem with the, the perimeter fencing. What is, what is an outdoor storage area? Children's toys, um, bicycle, patio furniture?
It doesn't apply to industrial?
No, it doesn't apply to residential. We're, outdoor storage is referred to in.
Well, there's residential is referred to in, in C.
Outdoor storage located within fifty.
Oh, within fifty.
Within fifty feet of a residence or commercial.
Yeah, but, but I don't see.
So we allow outdoor storage in certain, for certain uses in certain zones.
But I don't see that here.
Well, no, it would be in the first section that we have already reviewed.
Well, then I think we need to cite to that. I mean, this, this, by experience.
What you're trying to say is you're protecting the residential from the commercial or industrial use.
Yeah.
It's adjacent, but somehow it doesn't read that way.
No.
So we just need to get more specific about what we, where am I?
On your applicability.
Applicability applies only to commercial and industrial.
Well, we just wanna call it, uh, non-residential outdoor storage.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, that's.
Well, agricultural, you're gonna have a, so you have to fence in your tractors?
No, I think we're not.
Non-residential.
I don't think that solves the problem.
You don't think so?
Non-residential would mean it would.
Oh, so you're saying that somebody might apply this to an agricultural operation?
We can say that. And actually, it's, wouldn't be a terrible thing if it applied to agricultural, adjacent to single family residential. Except that we.
It would be forty.
You wouldn't want it to apply to a single farmhouse next, but of course, he's gonna be five hundred feet away, four hundred feet away from.
So herein lies one more question then, now that I'm reading this. We have a number of, um, home occupations. And it might be a single individual that has a dump truck, and he hauls for other people and then parks his truck at his house.
Yeah.
I mean, that might be seen as, um, you know.
The definition of goods and materials is probably, I think, is where some of the problem is, is it sounds so broad.
Yeah.
That it could apply to anything.
Right.
Any material object.
Well.
You can leave a hologram out there, as long as you.
You know, it, yeah, it's not, it's saying within fifty feet of a residential or commercial zone in a district, so it's trying to protect the retail commercial, so.
It shall apply to storage of commercial goods.
That's what I was gonna say.
Doesn't really deal with where, I mean.
Or business related.
Machines or commercial machines. I'm great at shot shooting things down, I'm not coming up with a good.
You want me to, I can pass this by, um.
Great.
I'll pass, yeah. I'll get, um, I'll get Martha to take another look at this. So the intent is to not impact residential.
Or, or retail.
Storage.
It looks like.
Or retail.
Commercial, just like, you know, that maybe the restaurant doesn't want it in out their patio. And industrial.
Well, and, and for that matter, view corridors. It, it, it's something that I think we need to protect, so when you're driving, you don't see a bunch of, you know, trade equipment. Uh, you need, probably need some exposure if you're a retailer that sells tractors and trailers.
Right, right.
And junk, but at some point, uh, those things should be kind of held discreetly behind, I, I don't know, just, just a thought. Maybe view.
But if you are, uh, yeah, I mean, if you're, say, a machine shop and you've got a, a scrapyard full of metal that.
Yeah.
That definitely needs to be.
Screened.
Screened.
And I'm not sure that your outdoor storage needs to be located out of all the required setbacks if it's fenced.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe we just need another look at that.
Okay.
Right to farm.
Amen.
Yeah. The right to farm should take precedence over all other adjoining and nearby land uses, except that is not absolutely true in rural residential or residential agricultural zones, right?
Right.
How much of this, we have that, we have the right to farm.
Currently.
In our code.
Yeah, so currently, you'll find the right to farm clause only enumerated in AP and A1.
Okay, perfect. Then I think it makes sense. Again, don't want that pig farm in the R R zone.
Swimming pools.
Yes.
Some knowledgeable person suggested that there'd be swimming pools, spas, or similar man-made bodies of water. So that if you have a fishing pond or something like that.
Or similar man-made what?
Or similar, and then man-made.
Man-made body of water.
And then bodies, I think.
So long as we're distinguishing that man-made body from like a pond or a.
Yeah.
Like an agricultural pond. I was just figuring, somebody'll say, well, it's not a, well, it's not a spa, but it's a.
It's a what?
Yeah, a water feature.
Oh.
Oh.
But these aren't just water features, these are pools and spas. I mean, a water feature could be.
I think that's what she's distinguishing.
Right.
Yeah.
But what you don't want someone to do is.
Oh, definitely.
Say, oh, well, your reservoir.
For, for. Is what we've always.
For watering your livestock that your kids happen to be swimming in.
Yeah. So we, weren't we gonna change this pool or spa-related equipment location to match the HVAC equipment?
Yeah, potentially, we were going to discuss whether or not pool and spa equipment would fall under the same category that we've given, uh.
It doesn't seem like.
Or the type of mechanical equipments that we're allowing to approach into the side yard.
Yeah, I would think you would. But we could maybe ask Martha if there's, something has come up that she's aware of that makes it.
Regarding the, um.
The pool.
The pool and spa equipment, the location of?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're thinking of treating it like, just like we did the mechanic.
Right, right, allowing it, um, well, so allowing it within five feet, just as we do the swimming pool? What did we say? We said, on the other, we said, um.
We said they couldn't approach into the setback, but.
Right, but you have to have at least thirty-six inches, yeah. Clearance? I don't know, I mean, it seems like it would be consistent, I mean, if we allowed it five feet along with the swimming pool, then wouldn't that be good enough?
Within five feet would be fine with me. That would be simple and keep.
It would be very simple, so basically, we can just, yeah. We can get rid of the, okay, I know what we need to do, if that's what you guys want.
Actually, that's what's being said under B, on the next page.
So B, B says that the equipment has to comply with the regular zoning standards, but we allow swimming pools and spas to be within five feet of the property line rather than the regular standard setback, which might be as much as twenty feet.
Oh.
That's always been kind of the problem, you're reviewing a swimming pool plan and the pool is five feet, and then, you know, now you're searching for where the equipment is, and a lot of times, the equipment is located within the standard zoning setback of, generally speaking, twenty feet, which then they gotta send the plans back through and find a new location for the pool equipment, which kind of doesn't really make any sense, unless, of course, you're trying to reduce noise, but then again, if we're allowing generators within a side setback, then you might as well, I don't think a swimming pool, uh, equipment is near as loud as a generator. Or even an HVAC system. Some of those can get pretty noisy, too.
I, I think unless somebody knows something different within five feet makes sense, I do think we need to make sure that if that equipment is inside a building, the building still has to respect.
Right, right, right.
But might not help everybody.
Encourages them to have noisy machinery within five feet instead of in a building.
Get those covers that look like rocks.
Yeah.
Okay. We're okay with awnings in the buildings and?
I think so.
Yeah.
Visibility at intersections, intersections and driveways.
Oh, I remember seeing these sorts of diagrams. It, it said maintain vision clearance or something, but you have this nice clear, this is our.
She's gonna add all those at the end, so, um.
But she, I mean, she has some in here right now in this. But she, she has something in here right now and this makes it much.
Oh, we do, there it is. Oh, yeah, it's gonna be super nice, yeah.
I wonder about, as far as easements go. I mean, there are easements in this county that have not been used for eighty years. And to require the visual clearance area for something that hasn't been used and probably won't be used. Seems rather restrictive, I don't know if we want to say.
But it's still exists, until it's vacated, it's exist.
Sometimes there are fences across these things.
Yeah, well, I, I think it's more of a safety precautionary thing, visibility is, is more. So you can at least see, you can at least see.
I understand, but, but, but when you have, I mean, in fact, we have, there's an easement on our. Property, I mean, we have no visibility problems, but, um, the easement has not been used in a hundred years. I think. The, uh, but should we have, shall not apply to easements that have not been used for at least.
No, I don't recommend that. I think we should leave it just the way it is. If that becomes an issue, then it's a civil matter, they can deal with it civilly. You know? Um, I don't think the county wants to get involved in that. I think Julie would not be happy with me if.
I see how this works.
Not told you in the past.
The problem is if somebody builds something in there.
Until it's vacated, it exists. Whether somebody's using it or not. If they don't wanna use it, then they can vacate it, there's a whole process.
Yeah, I, I was happy to see this because it's always something that we kind of debate, well, what actually. Where's this, the line on that little road for the stop sign and where is actually that vision clearance? And, and I'm perfectly happy with the cannabis other than cannabis retailer section.
And I'm real happy with groundwater management.
Landscaping.
Landscaping. Do you have any sketches for us on landscaping? Yeah, green highlighter. I think I might have some.
One easy thing is seventeen point oh five point oh two oh, just should be applicability, the title. There's nothing about purpose in that text.
You know. Speaking of, there was somewhere way back at the beginning this. Where instead of alterations, it said alternations.
Alternations?
We might just search for alternations and.
Maybe we haven't gone to it.
I, it was at the beginning.
Oh, was it seventy-five year old?
Here it is, it was actually on page six. Demolition of. Or alteration, it was in the text part of it afterwards.
You're right.
Kelly was having.
Yeah, well, we didn't go through that page.
Right, we didn't look at it.
Okay, um. As an architect, it's front building plane, is that, I mean, do you, on, on.
Meaningful to me, the front building plane, yes.
I mean, it sounds like the front wall.
I just think we, again, it's all gonna come back to describing what landscaped means. Cause I'm not sure my bulbs and being planted some on my trees would qualify as. Landscaping under a typical landscape ordinance, but then again.
We'll try to bring, I'll bring something back.
We get down to disturbed areas. Any disturbed vegetation shall be replaced by native or drought tolerant, tolerant Mexican. So you, you till your vegetable garden and you can't plant carrots. Oh, that's my brand of rain. So I, I guess. Disturbed areas anywhere?
Yeah, that's what I was just gonna say.
I don't think that's the intent, but I can see how that could be.
Right.
Interpreted.
So it, it applies to the areas that are required to be landscaped only, right? Unless they, it needs plantings to stabilize things, but that's a whole different issue.
I would say that's a different issue.
But we also have the problem, what is disturbed? Disturbed vegetation, but included mowing lawn. You have to get into the dirt.
It's a good thing we're quitting early today. We are headed off and.
Anyway, I, I don't know what disturbed vegetation means. The station of gophers.
Those guys disturb me a lot.
But what, what, what are we really after here? If, if you go down to the dirt, then you have.
If you removed, if you remove vegetation, if it's removed, vegetation is considered to have been disturbed, so you've gone there, you've. Tilled, you've taken the grass or whatever off and, or down to clay or sand or whatever. Then that's a disturbed area.
That's a disturbed area, I agree, but disturbed vegetation sounds like it could be clipped or.
But actually, I'm not sure that's what we wanna say because. But it all, because native or drought tolerant landscaping implies plantings. And you could have a landscaped area that has a dry green through it and other. Things that would be considered landscaping. Patio.
Right, well, and I mean, you could have, I mean, think, think of this as well, I mean, we are a rural county with some very large. Parcels. And, you know, you might actually have.
What if the front plane.
Livestock.
Was half, half an acre back.
Yeah, so I mean, you might, you might have livestock that's, you know.
Raised in front of your house.
Raised in front of the house and maybe they've disturbed the area to the point where you have no vegetation. This might be misconstrued as saying you have to then replace it with plants.
Well, it's, and I think it's intended to apply to residential, so many. But all residential, like R R.
Well, and that's the problem, so I mean, if you look at A, residential zone districts requiring front and street side setbacks. In a residential zone district, think of, think of a twenty acre rural residential parcel in Diamond Twenty. All required front and street side setbacks except areas used. Um, for it, um, exit and entry shall be landscaped. That's, that's unreasonable.
I, I think the intent here is. You replace, uh, native vegetation with native vegetation, so. Maybe what, what I'm trying to say here is maybe any, um. Any native or drought tolerant vegetation removed shall be replaced by native or drought tolerant, uh, landscaping. Maybe that's what we're going for.
But we're not, you know, our, our, we could have, the house could be at the back of the property and they could have a barn. In the front. We're not asking them to get rid of that. In particular, not right.
No. So, um.
What's the intent then?
Well, I think, and again, this is all from Willow, but I think the intent is. To require landscaping for, um, think of R one residential. Um, you know, low, low density, or I should say, you know, anywhere from, you know, high, medium. Uh, low density residential subdivisions rather than, um, you know, rural parcels. Of any acreage, but I don't, I'm uncertain as to whether or not we have the ability to regulate. That through the water, the model, water efficiency, landscape ordinance. Because I'm not that familiar with it, it's, it's, it's rather lengthy and kind of convoluted, but we can probably nail that down to see if we have the ability. But, um, it, it just seems unreasonable to me to start requiring. And at what point, I mean, a lot of our subdivisions, I mean, literally, we would have to be requiring a landscape plan. For every building plan that we get.
Well, I think the intent of the state is if, if you have landscaping. It needs to be drought tolerant or native landscaping, not to require landscaping. Now.
But it wants us to review a plan, who are you gonna get to voluntarily come in with a plan showing us what they wanna do with their front yard?
I don't know, for years now, my, my plans say if landscaping is to be installed. When it's in a in town lot or in a subdivision, if landscaping is to be installed at the time. Of the building permit, then these are the requirements, that you have to have this kind of irrigation system. Use these kind of plants, but, um. Because that's actually what's required for the code. If you're not putting in landscaping, there's no requirement that you put in this irrigation system that ties to weather data.
And that doesn't exactly, that's not clear. Cause this almost implies to me, when I read this, it almost implies that. Everybody needs to landscape, then you gotta landscape according to this.
What code were you just referring to?
So it's in the green building code, I believe, this is the place where that is.
But doesn't, doesn't Willow require five percent?
No, I, and again, I'll have to go back through it again, but when I, when I did just a, a real quick review of that ordinance. I couldn't find anywhere that had a standard minimum requirement for landscaping. Like right now, our code says five percent of the land devoted to structures and parking. Uh, shall be, you know, planted with new landscaping. And that's only for commercial and industrial uses, we don't require anything for residential. Um, so we've eliminated all those minimum requirements. Um, and we're just trying to point back to the Willow. But it, it, to me, it's just not very clear, but I'll, I'll see if we can't kind of.
We could make it so that for commercial and industrial, there are some kind of landscaping requirements.
Right.
Minimal and that they comply with the state's guidelines for native and drought tolerant irrigation systems. And then I think we have to talk about what we wanna do for residential. And, but if you install landscaping, needs to comply.
Well, and if that's the case, then I think we need to state that because. Right now, it looks as though everybody has to comply.
That just reminds me.
That's crazy.
I'm sorry, you know, that just reminds me, as part of the strategic plan. We are supposed to come up with a model landscaping ordinance.
So when landscaping is required, you have to use these sorts of irrigation systems, these sorts of plants or native.
Yes, and we have a palette, we're gonna develop a palette where you can pick, you can pick stuff from. Yes, absolutely, yeah, so that's coming.
All of that's great, but I don't think we wanna say that we're requiring everybody to landscape.
No, it wouldn't be appropriate, uh, in certain places, but it would be thoroughly appropriate in certain places. Yeah, yeah.
So it seems like we need to come back to this one.
Okay, um, so real quickly though, um. Down on, um, B, under areas to be landscaped, commercial zone districts. I think we inadvertently left out, well, we at least should be including M four, do we want to include M one and M two? Those industrial areas to be landscaped as well? I know that. The problem is, is we've required landscaping in the past and although they're supposed to be kept, you know, in a vigorous. Manner, healthy vigorous manner in perpetuity, but it almost never happens in those areas, you know. Of, of the industrial area.
And we, we, we almost never enforce, we never go back and write the letters and tell them they need to.
Yeah, I mean, we barely have enough staff to process applications, let alone do landscape enforcement. And then, and then we're gonna be getting into signage and, and everything else comes along, I mean. There's all kinds of enforcement that we should be doing.
Right, but anything that's part of a discretionary approval, subject to conditions of approval, should have that follow through. Which is, you have to comply with your conditions, which include maintaining the landscaping in a healthy manner. In perpetuity, et cetera, et cetera, so it's all part of, of project management, not separately.
So should we make it very clear that we also include M one, M two and M four?
Yeah, beautification.
So commercial and industrial zoning. What about? Public service?
Yeah, why should we be exempt? And then if we're gonna do that, then maybe we need to be looking at recreation as well. I mean, if you've got outdoor recreation areas such as picnic tables and things and playgrounds and stuff, then. They should be landscaped with. Trees and, okay. So basically, we're looking at all development with the exception of residential and agricultural.
Right. And the question is, would we wanna require anything in. Residential on smaller parcels, but even then. Like we don't wanna preclude people from having their vegetable garden in their front yard instead of traditional landscaping.
Sure.
Let the homeowners associations.
Let them do, let the, yeah, when your existing vegetation fails, you shall replace it with droughts.
Put the plastic plant, oh, no, not, no plastic. So, so that brings me to another thing, so the whole issue of. Plastic lawns. There's a whole other issue now coming up with it that it's. They're having contamination of the soil from the plastic lawns. Especially from the substrate up to the. Turns out that it's super flammable. So that seems like the, the synthetic lawn question is gonna need to get addressed. So the state was saying you can't ban it, but now the state is changing their rules to say. Locals can ban it for those reasons.
Yeah, does that include schools too? Out of our jurisdiction.
I think it's one of the reasons that's come up.
Oh, yeah.
So, so you have health issues with it and you have the whole wildfire issue. Just goes to show a lot of unintended consequences.
Exactly.
One problem and you create.
Create another.
So I don't know, but we might wanna look into what the current state of the art is on. Regulations around synthetic lawns.
Oh, boy. I have no problem with this one. Move on.
Really?
I was gonna say.
No, no, I have no problem, like I wanna eliminate. Some. Some, um.
Okay.
Okay, well, let's.
Well, there were some things in here that I was confused a little bit by. You go first.
Well, okay, right at the very beginning, this chapter is intended to permit the use of parcels. Okay, now those are. Use under the, are zoning uses. Continuation of uses. Of structures. But we get into the applicability, and this applies with some of the other provisions too. We talk about the, the date of the adoption of this title. Um, if this title still has the same number as the old one does. Um, should we be more specific as far as the adoption of this version or this?
Two thousand twenty-four.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I had in twenty twenty-four adoption of this title.
Um. Uh, Tim, what's gonna happen is this, when this gets adopted, it's gonna have a date at the bottom of the page. So that would be the reference date. Uh, it would separate it from other. And I'm sure you've seen in other ordinances where you see the date, the date of adoption. Is shown at the bottom of the page, then this would have the same thing.
Yeah, it'll have reference to the ordinance number.
Number.
And the date.
And the day.
Okay.
Yeah.
So even though this title might have the same, and what do we, when we say title, we're talking about zoning.
Yes.
Yeah.
Entire.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, okay. So then we get into as well as structures, parcels, and uses that become nonconforming due to subsequent amendments to its text. Or to the zoning map. And, don't we wanna say structures, parcels, and uses that were. Legally, legally established and nonconforming before the adoption of this title. So they're, they're back to.
We just said that.
Okay, I guess.
Become nonconforming.
Yeah, okay.
But it does, did it say?
I guess, what I was trying to.
That were legally.
And, and they were already nonconforming is what I'm trying to say, is that. Under a prior amendment.
Oh, you wanna catch all nine, nonconforming?
Yeah.
Well, if they're nonconforming now, then they're still gonna be.
Nonconforming.
They could still be nonconforming.
But the way we phrase this, though, it says as well as structures and uses that become nonconforming.
By adoption of this title.
Yeah, you, you were not taking care of the ones that were already nonconforming.
So you think that just like throws them into a completely different, like, unregulated category? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm just saying that it applies to people, I'd say it right now, I have a nonconforming use.
Okay.
You enact the title over here.
Yeah.
What happens to that nonconforming use? Isn't it still going to be preserved?
Yes.
Okay, we don't say that specifically.
Yeah, we don't explicitly say that, that.
So you're saying that.
Exist.
Without stating it, someone could very well argue that their previously nonconforming use is now conforming. Because you didn't state that it was still nonconforming.
You will know what we're saying. It says now that your nonconforming use is now is a problem. And it has to be abandoned because we're not saying that we're gonna carry forward anything that was.
Nonconforming.
Previously nonconforming, but acceptable.
What about saying the provisions of this chapter apply to structures, parcels, and uses. That are nonconforming, including those that have become nonconforming by adoption of this title.
Or I think we wanna say that they were legally established at any time in the past. And became nonconforming as a result of this or previous zoning code.
That's good.
Modifications, right? That's what you're trying to.
That's what I was trying to do.
But wouldn't our nonconforming capture all of those? And we're just also saying.
No, because we said not, they became nonconforming as a result of the, this adoption.
I'm recommending an edit to that section.
Yeah.
Where it would say seventeen oh six oh two, I would say the provisions of this chapter apply to structures, parcels, and uses. That are nonconforming, comma, including those that have become nonconforming.
Yes.
Okay. That are nonconforming, comma, including those.
Including the uses that have become nonconforming by adoption of this title, comma.
Well, I mean. Are nonconforming doesn't quite have it that were nonconforming.
Yeah. Okay.
Nonconforming before the adoption of the title. In fact, that's, but they also, nonconforming, I take it. Includes the concept that they were at one point legally established.
Right.
So we could say legal nonconforming. The provision of this chapter apply to structures and uses. That are legal, nonconforming. And, or including those that have become legal, nonconforming by adoption of this title.
It has to be that were legal, nonconforming.
Except they might still be.
Right, but, but both, but one capture both.
Then instead of including, then instead of including it, just the end.
Were legal, long-conforming, or they became legal, long-conforming, both.
Yeah, and became.
They could have become legal, long-conforming several generations of zoning codes back.
Right. And with.
I guess in my brain, those old ones that still exist are still are legal, nonconforming.
Yeah.
The term reverse.
We've pretty much come around to the language I first read.
What, what's the language gonna be?
Okay.
That's, uh, I, I added at the end, uh, and structures, parcels, and uses that were legally established. And nonconforming before adoption of this title.
That's the concept for sure.
Um, oh.
Yeah, if they can be more artfully stated, that's fine.
Because we're, I think, Julie, you're thinking of it as today, but we're thinking of it when we're reading this a year from now. And so when it says they are legal, nonconforming, it sounds like now as a result of this new code, but. Really, it happened as a result of a previous.
Yeah, and I, and it's just how we're conceptualizing the language and how we use the terms. Because what, in my brain, anything that is legal, nonconforming could be, it could be based on something that happened a hundred years ago. Could be based on something that happened yesterday. They're all legal, nonconforming.
Yeah.
Right.
So our works for me, but it might not work for.
Yeah, it's just the, the, the problem became the, the language itself that had become. Okay. Next thing I have is under O three O B, and it's just, uh. Down about, let's see, one, two, three, four lines. Um, or starting up on three, or any change to any building or structure, comma, and. No substitution. So adding and there before no substitution.
Okay, but where are you?
Uh, third line from the bottom.
Under B?
Under B, yeah.
Building or structure, comma.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Uh, under B.
Under B.
After building or structure.
Building or structure, oh, okay.
Comma, and.
And no substitution.
Okay.
Right.
I am, under O four O. The last sentence, I, I just had a hard time getting the meaning that. A nonconforming parcel may be used as a building site, subject to compliance with all applicable requirements. Unless a variance or waiver is approved as provided for in this title. Well.
Well, I think what it should say is a nonconforming parcel may not be used. Unless a variance is approved.
I don't think that's what it says. I think it's saying that you have to require to meet all the setback, height. Access requirements, but it, but if you are unable to because of the constraints of that parcel. That you can apply for variance or waiver to allow you to do so.
So you have a, non, that's, that's, let's come up with an example. So you have a parcel that is nonconforming because of what? Because.
Too small.
Too small.
Yeah.
Size would be, yeah, so you've got a, you've got a one-acre parcel in a five-acre. Minimum parcel size required land use designation and zoning reg.
So, so you really don't have the nonconforming rights. If you have to comply with all applicable requirements.
Well.
I mean, of course, maybe, of course, it's a use that we're looking at, the nonconforming use. So you already, I mean, if. If you don't have the use as of a building, that point.
No, we're, we're.
I'm only talking about the parcel, not your, no.
The building site. So what we're saying is, well, we get.
What's the nonconforming, it's a nonconforming parcel, that means it's below the minimum size for any.
Most likely, that's what.
Uh, uh, one of the biggest questions we get is, oh, um, I've got a one-acre parcel. And, um, and it's in a five-acre minimum required land use designation. Does that mean I can't build on my parcel?
Yeah. Well.
And, and, and our answer is, yes, you can build on that parcel, but you still have to. And I, okay, a good example is, um, you're in an area without public water and sewer. And your parcel relies on a well and an onsite wastewater system. Typically, you need five acres in order to accommodate setbacks and area for. An onsite wastewater system, a well, a house, et cetera, and meeting all your setbacks and distance requirements. Generally, it's a five-acre parcel for all of that. Now, does that mean that you can't build on the one acre? No, if you can find a suitable area for a septic system. And a leach, uh, expansion field, and your well, and your house, then you've got yourself a buildable lot. It may not work in some cases, but if you can, if you can somehow fit it. And, and you're still in compliance with all the ra, the requirements. Then it doesn't matter whether or not your parcel doesn't conform to the right size.
So in that case.
To a nonconforming use.
Right, no.
Cause the use doesn't already exist.
Right, well, that's what I was, I'm concerned, but then what about the word unless a variance is approved?
Right.
May be used unless a variance.
So.
I mean, doesn't, I mean, isn't it may be used if you have a variance or what?
I, what if, what if we said a nonconforming parcel may be built on. If it complies with all applicable requirements, get rid of the comma, unless a variance or waiver was approved. Just to make it clearer.
Well, actually, what I, what I.
That's where I get confused.
Yeah, so, so what, what I had said earlier, I think we need to kind of pay some, a little bit of attention. I, I think what we want to say here is you cannot use a nonconforming parcel for a building site. Unless you apply for a variance from some of the compliance requirements.
No.
That's not what we're trying to say?
No.
No, I think we are.
I appreciate your confusion.
Thank you very much.
Is you must comply with all the requirements.
Okay.
Unless.
You get a variance.
Very, that will allow you to.
Not comply with.
Not comply.
Right, so the variance is gonna allow you an exception.
Yeah.
If you can make the fight.
Maybe it should be two sentences to make that more clear.
I think so.
But it's clear, it is clearly what we're trying to say.
I'm glad.
I know. The next section is.
Well, I, wait, wait. My confusion comes back. It's like the shade gets drawn again here, um.
So here, that's the suggestion. So a nonconforming parcel may be used as a building site, subject to compliance with all applicable requirements. Period.
Period.
If it is not possible to comply with all applicable requirements, a variance or waiver may be applied for.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that, that makes sense.
As provided for in this title.
Yeah.
So I have a question about the nonconforming setbacks section. Why would you allow to extend your nonconforming condition?
Yeah, I agree.
Well, there was a classic example that we had, which was an existing nonconforming. Setback, and there was an addition proposed to that structure. If the new addition complies with the setback, it gives the building a really weird-looking shape. So logically, and from an architectural standpoint, maintaining that straight line. Would be, would be the logical thing to do. So that's, that's why we have this.
So the, the setback actually changed in this scenario? So there was a, um. There was a five-foot setback, side yard setback that was, um, allowed. Uh, during the, at the time that the house was constructed. And then subsequent to that, um, the setback changed to ten feet. Um, the homeowner came in and, um, proposed to add a small six-foot addition. Onto the side of the house, not increasing the, um, you know, the, um, the encroachment at all. Um, but they, it basically was in complete line with the existing house structure. Uh, just a small six-foot addition and, um, and, well, it was actually an oversight on my part. But we allowed it, um, to occur. And, um, from a, you know, architectural stamp, you know, view. It, it makes no difference at all because the encroachment is already there. Um, and we weren't allowing them to encroach any further than the existing. I mean, they were actually six feet away rather than five.
Extended, it's, I was seeing extended.
Extension, yeah, would, would kind of imply.
Well, it's, but still, we would not typically have allowed that because.
And we, yeah, in a normal circumstances, we wouldn't have allowed it. It, it would just happen to be an oversight. Um, on, on the part of the reviewer.
This is trying to codify that situation and allow it as a typical situation.
Right.
I would suggest that's not a good idea, cause it's almost always gonna happen in a side setback situation. Where you are decreasing the defensible space between. Buildings. Yeah, that you and the adjacent house. I mean, the fact that there's, it already exists, you're not gonna make them tear that off. But, but I'm not sure that I would say that just without any further. Evaluation that we should allow them to just go ahead and now make it the whole length of the house.
I mean, if the neighbor's kitchen window looked at that area, and what they were looking at was. Twelve feet away or something of this sort, uh, and then all of a sudden it's six feet away. That's, that's, that's a big difference and.
I'd be more concerned about the fire.
Well.
But, well, if you're still maintaining, uh, i- if you're able to maintain proper distance between structures. I mean, in this case, the setback went from a five-yard setback to a ten-yard setback. So if, even if you were at five, you're still maintaining a minimum of ten feet between structures, so.
Well, then, but then I, I think.
No, because let's, well.
Wait, and it just, I'm more concerned about the neighbor's visibility and. I mean, it just, I'm more concerned about the neighbor's visibility and the sort of thing, that all of a sudden, the part of the house I look at when I'm doing the dishes is suddenly six feet closer.
No, no, the part of the house you're looking at is still going to be the same, except that there's more mass to that thing that you've been looking at. So that setback, that setback line doesn't change.
No, the setback line doesn't change, but
You're still looking at it, but now you're adding on to that setback line.
When you say extended, you're talking about, here are the houses side by side and you're, you're extending along this way.
Graphic designer?
Yeah. You got it.
Yeah, I
But maybe I should draw, draw a diagram.
I understand exactly what you're saying, but I that has always been not allowed here and in any other jurisdiction that I have worked in.
Ooh.
Except with the case of ADUs, which are allowed to do some oddball things.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. I've seen it allowed in order to maintain some architectural integrity. So that if, you know, if I'm adding a 10 by 10 space and to an existing nonconforming structure because the county changed its code, then it means that a portion of my addition would be five feet wide and then the rest of that portion would be 10 feet wide because to make, to make up for that consistency. So if I'm adding a 10 by 10 space, I should be, at least the idea is to be able to add that space without any kind of unnecessary jugs and cuts and things like that in the building.
By adding that space
But you're still maintaining
You're a part of a, a, a new part of the nonconforming house that is closer to the neighbor.
No, the new, the new, the new addition would be in line with the existing nonconforming setback.
It's currently still extending into the setback more than it would be allowed to do.
It's not that it's closer to the property boundary, it's just extending.
It's maintained, it's maintaining.
Extending the length.
Let me ask you a question. Let me ask you a question.
No.
Does a roof line, does a roof line extend all the way out?
No, the roof line would be the same.
Okay, so, so typically, I'm thinking you would have a patio area you're going to convert into extra living space?
So that would be allowed to do.
Or a porch? So what the homeowner wants is just more space?
But that's not what they're talking about. They're talking about adding on not just enclosing space that already exists under a roof.
Okay, so it's not under a roof?
No, you're adding
Well, it's, in theory, it's non-existent.
In my mind, you're adding new roofed portions to the house.
It doesn't exist.
I would never have left when I was right, well, I get it.
But he has a very good point that if there was an existing roof, they should be allowed to enclose that. They're not really making this into a
The reason I say that, the reason I say that is people will often take that covered roof portion and close it off and make an additional room. Happens all the time.
This is only about the setback. So this is about things that
No, I, I get that. What it does is, is it now you have a, a larger space that's
It's going further.
If somebody was washing the dishes, he's going to be able to see.
But if there was a portion of the setback, they'd be allowed to do that.
For my kids' sake, I had, I had that.
Yeah.
This is the concept of
Yeah, no.
And, and you increase the amount of space that so that you don't have the fire system. So part of the reason, I we don't know about that particular situation. Why did it go from five to 10 feet?
It was seeing compliance with the CC numbers. I mean, being that the standard setback was five feet and they were at six and, like I said, it was an oversight and it wasn't intentional, but
Why did
At the end, at the, at the end of the whole process, it was, you know, to us, it was very insignificant.
I don't think that one
No, I, I
Is the issue.
No, I, I'm
Issue is why they, why the code changed from five to 10 at some point for the life of that.
Yeah. So, I mean, we don't have to allow this entirely.
I understand that there is a
I'm certainly not going to die on this hill.
State law has a strong policy in favor of eliminating nonconforming uses and that would certainly go against extending nonconforming use. I, I, I'd get rid of
For me, it's more about the wildfire thing that we don't want to create a situation that, that's perpetuating a problematic situation.
Out it is.
But they could always apply for a variance, right?
Sure.
Under those circumstances. So that if it was a situation in which, you know, it doesn't really matter, then
Right.
Thing is
Then in that case, finding for a variance would be very weak.
Right. Findings are hard.
I know findings are hard.
They are hard.
Especially for variances, they are very, very strict.
Yeah, but when, and they should be. I think, under these are
Right.
As much as it will probably frustrate me in the probably not very
You better reach the money that plane. I wish this was more flexible.
This is more flexible, but I don't believe it's in the best interests of everybody or the neighbors.
Okay.
What does everybody else think?
It's okay because it's a two to one.
It takes threes.
You can convince us otherwise, but you don't have the voice to do it. Yeah, I know.
He could draw pictures, though.
It'll take all three of you to make a quorum, I'll just say.
My point, my point is that I would approve of the expansion. You would? I would. And I would do so not so much in consideration of the, the issues that you raised, which are good ones. I would do it because the person that's living there may need to expand given, given what housing costs are now, given what budgets are now. I just see that as a, as a something that would benefit that homeowner more so than it would inconvenience everyone else.
But then it could apply for a variance and explain why there was no other solution. But if, but they'd have to go through that process and it'll cost them something.
And I have to apologize a little bit. I haven't had time yet to send Mr. Commissioner Lozano. There's, it, there is some intersection with state law when it comes to nonconforming uses and it's fuzzy. It's not an easy, it's not a hard line. When it comes to variance findings, it's a hard line. And so there, what, what Commissioner Lettich was saying was right, that there is in fact a state policy to eliminate nonconforming uses and that comes from largely this, there's a rule of uniformity. I guess in the past, zoning rules were applied in a discriminatory fashion against certain parcels within the same zone. And so the state said, no more of this. Any parcel, you, you can make rules for the zone, but you're not supposed to sort of institutionalize. There's no point in making the, if you want to fix it, you change it, the whole thing for the zone, not just for individual parcels. And so there's a big difference between allowing a nonconforming use to continue and allowing it to expand. And there's not a lot of case law on allowing it to expand. But just so you, I'll send you a memo that'll help you.
If, if that's the direction you're going, I've seen many ordinances that allow expansion of a nonconforming structure if it's no larger than 10% of the existing size of the structure. So there are, there are instances where extending a nonconforming structure might make logical sense just because of some of the things that we've just talked about. If it doesn't exceed a particular percentage of the existing structure. I've seen that in many, many codes.
But this is, well, in respect to the setback itself is the issue, right?
I mean, expansion of a non, I'm less concerned about expansion of an, of a nonconforming structure than I am necessarily expansion of the structure into the setback.
Yeah, I think there's two issues there. Like the percentage increases a percentage of what makes sense. Like, you know, if the length of the wall that is within the setback is expanded. I, you know, if it's less than 30% of length of the wall or whatever, I don't know. But to say of the square footage of the house, that doesn't make sense to me because you could create a monster that way of nonconforming oddities.
So do we just want to leave it out then?
It's a subsection one.
Are we back on nonconforming setbacks? We're, we're still in agreeance that it's out?
It's out. Yeah.
No changes?
Bearing to
Not even if it complies with fire
No.
Safe regs? Okay, moving on. Repair and replacement of damage and just
But the fire safe rig, it'd be unlikely to be a nonconforming setback.
Well, I'm just thinking of the incident that was the, it went from five feet, which is a standard in most, you know, residential to 10. You know, I mean, that would be a, a similar situat, that would be a situation that would fit under there.
But the fire safe stuff is 30 feet.
Well, but what are you talking about then? Separation.
Oh, I'm just saying the separation between buildings. So under the building code, you might comply
Right.
With it. So if you're saying, oh, if it complies with the building code requirements, would we allow it? Could that be an exception?
Right.
If but I still think you're still imposing on the neighbor.
Yeah.
But it depends, maybe the neighbor's in it. Back to it.
Could affect the neighbor's property value.
I mean, you want to let people do stuff, but then on the other hand, we, I don't want to extend a problem that's already existing.
Right.
I think your particular case, Gina, was one in which there's no angst over it. It felt like it was fine, right?
Well, for us.
The way we're using as an example.
Right.
But that's not always going to be the case.
It's not always going to be the case. And I, and I think there would need to be some discretion for especially those significantly reduced setbacks, like say, three feet from the property boundary might be one of those extreme cases. So if we can't come down to narrowing that down, then let's just eliminate it and move on.
Okay, next one. I have a problem with an act. The nonconforming structure that is damaged or partially destroyed by fire, explosion, earthquake, or natural disaster that is not caused by an act or delivered on the mission of a property owner. I mean, you could have a pretty innocent act that ends up causing the, you know, somebody trips and falls and hits the, the fireplace hardware and the hardware flips the
Willful act.
Yeah, will, but willful, yeah, that's certainly better.
That's the, what the, that's the legal term of our
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, but, and that's not as far as an act intended to damage or destroy. I mean, they're not trying to destroy the house, but they, yeah, okay, willful, I, I'm very, much better with it.
Okay, thank you, Julie.
Trying to use legally.
So And what about this substitution of a nonconforming use with another nonconforming?
Yeah, that's a little confusing.
Wait, wait, where are we? We're way over.
I'm on page 27.
Apparently, this is uncommon in practice.
I, I'm, I'm with you on that. I think that should be eliminated.
Okay, go ahead.
So on page 26, the B1 talks about, I mean, it, the lead in says that this is supposed to be an exception. And it isn't an exception to what's stated in B. The whole thing would make sense if you just say in, in B, shall be subject to all of the requirements of this title subject to the following provisions. And then one and two. Well, one, if you look at one, the, it isn't really an exception to what's stated in B. And it says it is. I mean, B says it's an exception. So it just needs to be, this, one is a, there's a clarification of, of B or in discussion. Yeah, as provided, that's great. That's better than having subject to in there twice. As provided in the following provision. Or as provided, sounds like this is the only way it can work. That's why I had subject to. It gets, and subject to the following provisions. Or since we've just said shall be subject to all of the requirements of this title, including the following provisions. How's that?
Yes.
Okay. I have no idea what you just said.
Okay.
So start over, please. I have, I don't want to have a hard time keeping up with you, Tim. Your brain works faster than mine.
If the cost of, what I wish, if the cost of repair or reconstruction exceeds 50% of its replacement cost
Oh, I think I'm under the wrong section. Maybe that's why I'm, where are you at?
The top of the page 26.
Oh, yeah. Okay, I'm, I'm like really lost.
Okay, you see B at the top of 26?
B, yes.
Okay, instead, and at the end of that paragraph, instead of except as provided before,
Be well?
Just say including the following provisions. Then number, you ready for number two? Maybe getting used to the terminology, but all current design and proper to develop standards. I, I wasn't clear exactly what we wanted to do and I wondered if we ought to just cite the sections we're talking about. As provided in chapter 17.08 in sections such and such and such.
So cite those sections?
Again, I don't know, I don't know where you are.
Oh, okay. And two at the bottom.
The B2?
Yeah, B2 last one.
If any
Big B2. Yeah, big B2.
At the top of the page.
If any.
Yeah, maybe resumed provided the rebuilt development complies with I, I, I wasn't sure what you were referring to by all current design and property development standards. But I thought maybe you wanted to say is all current standards as provided in Now maybe everybody else knows exactly what we're talking about.
What about just using the same language for the nonconforming parcel, subject to compliance with all applicable requirements? Something along, you just carry that language over because we already used it.
Which is like, the setbacks in height.
What's that language?
Right. I think it's site development standards.
All the standards and requirements of this title?
Well, I think that, I think what that's saying is, say for instance, it's something with the design guidelines. Or, you know, property development standards. We've got development standards written into code. Maybe there's some other standards that are with the
Well, I think Julie was on
Specific plan or something.
I mean, just the rebuilt, complies with all current requirements.
Well, I
Oops.
This is, this one could turn out to be messy because I think we're telling them they can have a residential A residential development and it can have a number of dwelling units, but we're not saying that it can go back in the same place. Or have the same design, that it will now have to meet all the requirements for that property or setbacks. And height and whatever other.
Yeah, we're not taking much of a break.
Requiring, right, you're not getting a lot of a break there, but you can't have a residential development on a parcel that would not normally have residential development. And I suspect this comes out of our. Desire to bend over backwards to allow housing wherever we can. But I have a whole nother issue with this section. It's a philosophical thing.
Okay.
Of using cost as a metric, because it's very, very difficult to argue that with a developer or owner. And that possibly something besides cost that is more easily quantifiable would be a.
Where is cost in here?
Exceeds fifty percent of value.
I don't, I don't remember if that comes from something in like state, the case law or not, or whether that was just left up to the counties. I just don't remember.
I see this all the time where people argue that they're keeping something, and so the cost of that. That's why they get to stay within the set, you know, with their encroachments into setbacks.
Oh, I see.
Issue is, and they're rebuilding it because they're only rebuilding the small amount, but by the time they're done, they have. Literally removed every bit of the existing.
So fifty percent of the structure, is that what you want?
But yeah, but even that's a problem, but that's at least something you can visually see. Value is very difficult to determine. Like whose value? The construction cost to rebuild it exactly, what it could be sold for, what it's assessed for.
So what structural area?
Yeah, I'm just saying, yeah, that would, I, if fifty percent of the, the floor area. I mean, it could be any.
Okay.
And I'm just throwing it out there for other people's thoughts. Because this is the kind of thing you argue over and. It's difficult.
That, then would be a problem with under A. And it would start since it's a cost repair.
So that means we even want to go back to. To the previous page, page twenty five, where we talked about restoration when damages fifty percent or less of value.
Yeah.
And, and we can change that if you don't wanna use value as just the yardstick.
Certainly A and B need to be consistent.
Right, I agree.
That's fifty percent.
My notes on this page.
Fifty percent of what is what? And I, I guess. Maybe it's easier to determine the value than it is to determine exactly what the. How much of the house is gone.
It's very difficult to determine value, almost impossible.
Well, depends on if you want it to be paid your.
Yeah, exactly. It depends on, on, on whether you're getting the loan or paying taxes on it.
Right. We heard that somewhere.
I mean, this might be the way most places do it, and I know I've seen this other places. I just know that it's the kind of thing that is just right with.
Yeah, that's, it's, it's old language in most zoning codes, but I think in this day and age now, perhaps. It needs to be looked at a little differently, but this probably came out of an exist.
We certainly don't wanna create any more problems for ourselves.
Right. So Julie said of the structure that might.
Okay.
Fifty percent of the structure? So if. If more than fifty percent of the structure has been.
Damaged or destroyed.
Damage.
Yeah, well, whatever they're saying. It says damaged or destroyed.
That's where the, the cost comes better, and it was better because the rest of the room had smoke damage.
Yeah, that section.
It was totaled by the insurance company.
Yes, destroyed.
Do we really wanna say have some percentage of what's destroyed? Instead of damaged or destroyed?
Yeah, or that must be reconstructed, but then again, is that, it's painting reconstructing now. I wonder where this came from and if there's some legal basis for anything here, the fifty percent.
Yeah, I, I, there's not a statute that'll say, that'll say that. There is a bunch of case law, and I think it's sort of the same thing. It's been typical to you. That, that fifty percent is pretty typical, but I don't remember. Frankly, I don't, I didn't catch the value thing. It might have been fifty percent of the structure that I've seen. I don't remember, but I can take a look at that.
Maybe just see if there's something that is less problematic.
Okay.
It's gonna get abused no matter what. There's a lot of fifty percent stuff about when you need to upgrade to entirely meet the new code, like building code. That uses the fifty percent.
Right, I think it's pretty common.
Yeah.
But not value.
Not necessarily value.
Yeah. Yeah.
And there's a lot of old zoning codes that, um, if you saved, the whole idea of saving a wall. Save one wall of that structure, you could rebuild in the same footprint, but that is way old. Haven't seen that in a long time, but people still believe that.
Yeah. Okay. We on to expansions, expansion?
Yes.
Changes and substitutions?
Tim's staring at his wording.
No, no.
You're done with it?
Okay, I'm looking under expansive. Um, I, I'm dubious about. Really, just about any of those. Uh, like residential use, non-conforming residential uses. Uses may be enlarged and expanded, providing no new dwelling units are created. Let's say you double the living space, but still.
Sure.
One dwelling unit. Um. Again, it looks as if we're giving particular breaks to people with non-conforming uses.
In the need for, to maintain, um, you know, residential. Um, you know, availability and. Our, our thought behind this was, um. If you think of. If you think of our zoning map. And where those, um, you know, there's a lot of. What the county has done is we've gone through all of our corridors through our towns, and we've just arbitrarily slapped a commercial zone district on everything. But when you drive up and down, say, for instance, San Andres, for instance, there is a lot of residential. Um, residential homes right off of, you know, the highway that have existed there for fifty, seventy-five years, if not more. Um, people live in them, um, you know, they intend to continue to live in them, but as, you know, your family grows. Uh, as time goes on, there's, there's been needs for expansions of those structures. And maybe even the additional, uh, garage, you know, that, that seems to be pretty common is. You know, they didn't have a garage at this house before, and now we have a garage, we want a garage. We need, we need to have a garage. That's, that would be an expansion of the use. Um, we want people to be able to, um. Expand that residential use with the idea that that's gonna keep them there and keep that residence available for that family.
I actually could understand that, so long as they have to comply with the development standards. That, that they're not both expanding the use and expanding a non-compliant footprint to make, you know. Not in the setbacks like we were just talking about.
Well, and I think there should be, yeah.
Fourth story or.
Right, and maybe if we're talking about this, it would be beneficial to talk about. Applying a setback to those commercial properties for residential purposes. Because right now, we don't have that. It's just a standard zero setback, which may not really be acceptable for a home. Maybe more appropriate to maintain at least that standard, uh, you know, five, twenty. Uh, you know, five on the sides, twenty in the rear, kind of a setback requirement.
I, we've talked about that before, that that's a weird situation.
Yeah, right, because, I mean, we even allow residential use in a commercial zone with a use permit. So I guess at, at the use permit stage, you'd have to apply a setback or maybe not. But, yeah, there is no residential setback that applies to the commercial zone, and, and, and we probably should have one. Especially with the under, if we are going to allow the expansion or enlargement of residential uses, assuming that they're gonna be located in a commercial zone district.
Now, we, when you talk about non-conforming residential uses. I, I understand the situation you're talking about. You have. In residential house in a commercial zone. Is, can you think of other, I mean, non-conforming residential uses could be, uh, in the setback, the current setback.
They could.
That's a different, but that we covered that.
Yeah.
Well, I know, but you know, I'm.
So we're still saying, based on the previous discussion, that, you know, if you, if we were to allow the expansion, they wouldn't be allowed to expand into that setback. They'd have to comply with the setback requirements, but.
But.
In, in our case, specific to commercial, there is no setback, so. That then kind of leads into another discussion is, should we apply a residential setback in the commercial zone?
A lot of them are really historic buildings and.
Right.
They are. They could be very historic.
Right. Right, but maybe it's a small addition to, you know, open up the kitchen, you know? Kitchens and homes, you know, fifty, seventy-five years ago weren't very big. Maybe there's a desire for the family to have a bigger kitchen area with a dining room, and they're gonna need to expand to the back of the, you know. They shouldn't have to come in and get a conditional use permit to do that, in my opinion, um, which is what code requires now.
So you could, I mean, I think what Gabriel was saying before was there were, he's seen ordinances where they had a set percentage, like ten percent. And that's probably less strain against the non-conforming use laws and less policies, and it's sort of curtailed. But as written, it seems like you could go from, you could literally triple, quadruple the size of an existing non-conforming use.
And I guess the question in my mind is, what harm is it gonna do? Um, you know. If you're currently living there and it's currently a residence. Who cares how big the house is if you're, if you're abiding by a setback regulation? Do we really, is it really an impact that we allow a family to expand their home to whatever size they want? As long as they're requiring with setback requirements and height requirements and so on? I don't think the intention is to mow down all these, you know, to push people out and, and turn everything into commercial structures.
Well, yeah, that was the intention.
Yeah.
To enable people.
Right.
To convert their property.
But now we're in a hi- housing crisis, and, you know, I mean, you look around and. Um, you know, even the vacant commercial lots we have aren't getting built upon.
Right. I, I agree, so that I don't know what the right way to. Proceed with this is, like, is it a percentage or do we establish specific setbacks for this situation? But I, I, I agree with some people too.
Yeah, and I, I think what we need to be careful of is that we don't give a person that has a non-conforming residential, residential use. More than what a conforming, than, than what could be expected. I mean, your, your idea of doing the setbacks, it's a very good one.
Right.
It's that, it isn't that. In this situation, there isn't going to be any conforming residential use, because this situation is there in the. Now, uh, zoning that doesn't, doesn't contemplate their use. But I think we just may need to limit it so that. They're not taking advantage of the fact that they're being non-conforming. And setbacks would be one way to do that, and I'm not sure how else, other than writing.
Setbacks would be a simple application, um. I mean, standard R one setbacks for residents are twenty feet in the front, twenty, you know, five on the sides, twenty in the rear. You could apply just the standard to residential.
Okay, so do we wanna just say, uh.
I mean, and, and really, it only applies to commercial, because all the other setbacks, whether you've got industrial or, I'm, I'm not sure what CP setbacks are. I'd have to go look, but. You know, we've got a number of homes that are in, so we've got whole blocks. Of residences in a CP zone right here in town. And, um.
So should, should we have it, that?
We could add. We could add a residential setback to those zones that would, would otherwise allowed of residents. Or even for the non-conforming s- s- argument, we could include a residential setback. For those zones that don't currently have a setback, for instance, C one, C two. Where there's a zero setback.
Other things like height requirements and this sort of thing would have to apply.
Oh, absolutely, and I, and I think you could even apply a residential height requirement. For instance, I think in the commercial zone is like forty-five feet.
Exactly.
You know, you could, in, in residential, it's only thirty-five feet, so you could very well apply the development standards of an R one zone. To residential structures in, say, the commercial zones.
That, that.
I mean, which makes sense, because you can apply for a conditional use permit if you've got a vacant piece of property. And right now, we've got no other development standards that would apply, other than.
And it could apply in both cases.
Right, right.
So that would kind of take care of two issues with one.
Both cases being what?
The case where somebody applies for a conditional use permit to build a residence on a commercially zoned piece of property. Or where there's an existing non-conforming, and they would like to expand and improve it.
Right.
I think that would be completely acceptable.
I, I agree.
And that would take care of much of your issue, right?
Yeah, the special break.
Yeah, well, and Hector's desire to allow people to improve their, their home. Both make sense to me.
And we're all assuming that the, the structure itself is going to be enlarged and expanded, but, uh. We're saying the residential use may be like, I mean, would this permit somebody to tear down a house and build a new one? That's larger and such. The way we're considering.
So could it?
It does, it could be interpreted that way.
Because it could have duplex, so I, like, I was thinking, like, could a non, an existing non-conforming duplex that has two eight-hundred square foot units be expanded? Into a non-conforming duplex with six thousand square foot units? I mean, is that?
If it fit within.
If it was in it.
So, and then that actually brought up the other part of my question, which is, so does that allow them an ADU? It's a residential use on a commercial piece of property. Would they be allowed an ADU?
I think they're.
If it's, if it's.
Is it commercials?
Zone, or if it's zone residential.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or if it's zone residential.
But I think there is some fuzziness around what counts as zone residential, because I don't remember if that was, I don't think that was actually defined in the statute, and I know that Gina and I were struggling at one point about what counts as residential zoning. And I think we sort of just landed on ones where residential use is at least
Are permitted.
is at least, like, the, at least equal to or great, or the entire purpose of the
Not support.
zone. Like, some mixed-use zones, which are half resi-, you know, meant to be half the primary use of residential, so.
Yeah, because so. And actually, I think if it had a duplex on it, they should be allowed to put, continue its use as a duplex and expand it.
Right.
I'm not even sure. I would be opposed to somebody creating it, having a second dwelling. I mean, we say as long as you don't create another dwelling unit, but that could be more of a legal density issue, because now we're creating more density. But but given our shortage of.
People just don't, you can't find any place to live, you know? And it's just, it just, it's, I, I, we've, we've heard it over and over again from people out in the community. You know, they have a smaller home on a non, you know, on a just commercial lot. They don't necessarily, you know, have, uh, you know, don't want to go through the use permit process. Uh, you know, it's expensive, it can be, you know, it's discretionary. Um, you know, and the, and a lot of times, people are just stuck, you know, they're, they're looking for something a little bit bigger, um, you know, they, leaves them no other option but to turn around and just try to find someplace else, which, you know, is okay in some cases, but I don't think we should have to force people out of their home.
Yeah. Especially something their family's own.
Right. And you know what I mean? Let's face it, there's a lot of that currently here, you know, there's a lot of homes that are been passed down through the generations, and they don't, you know, the kids don't want to get rid of grandma's place.
Yeah.
But they want to make it, they want to make it more conducive to their own lifestyle.
Them having an ADU even, because an ADU has to be used either by them or as a long-term rental.
Right, right.
Uh, whereas if they're other things could be turned into vacation rooms, and I wouldn't want to be supporting that necessarily, but but I could see somebody wanting to be able to rent a room out to help them pay for their their house.
Right.
Wow.
Or maybe the scenario is grandma doesn't need that bigger house, and so you build a granny flat for her in the back and and, uh, you know, the kids move into the, to the front home, but they got a family of six and need a little bit more space.
Right.
You know, I don't know.
So do we want to restrict this to the same building being enlarged or expanded?
I don't. If they want to build it, if they want it attached, I care.
Yeah.
And, and it may look pretty awful. If you keep the old building and tack it on. Okay, so, so basically, we're gonna say, uh, the, the, the finished product needs to conform with what?
R1 development standards.
Development standards?
Yeah.
Right.
Which would allow an ADU.
Mm-hmm. Well. Are we opposed to that?
No, I'm not.
Yeah.
I'm actually.
You know, the, the fact of the matter is, if you demolish an existing non-conforming, uh, structure, that non-conformity is gone. There's nothing else to consider. So whatever you build has to conform to required standards. If you totally take it off, right?
Well, yeah, but then, then you couldn't build with residents.
Yeah, yes, you could under this wording currently, which talks about the use being extended.
Okay.
Nothing about the structure. But I actually would be probably okay with that. I'm not sure I care.
Yeah.
We need housing so badly.
Yeah, I mean, this is probably, like, the cases that talk about non-conforming uses, the big pieces, the expansion of them, where you're increasing
Yeah.
the non-conformity, that still would be, I mean, as opposed to requiring it to be developed along the lines of a similar.
Yeah. I think the challenging part with us is we've got such a, even though we've designated areas for certain things, we've got such a mix of use everywhere. I mean, look at Arnold. They, there's a huge blocks of, of land that they zoned commercial. And you've got, you know, residences, residents, residents, right, commercial. You know, development, commercial development, resident. I mean, it's like this whole, everybody's just mixed in together, and there's no, there's no uniformity with anything. Um, but people seem to be okay with it, um.
Actually allowing mixed uses and have people living closer to where they work or pop is not necessarily a bad thing.
Yeah.
I mean, so even with our greenhouse gases, we should probably get points for this discussion. Okay. Are we all?
So where's the non-residential use?
Yes, okay.
When it says the planning commission makes the following findings, that starts with findings, but then there are conditions. So I would change that to takes the following actions, but that doesn't, I mean, the conditions is.
Makes the following findings.
Well, it isn't.
And.
Yeah, yeah. Let's see. And since the, under, under B, why it's something that the planning commission may do. We could just have the, where the planning commission in a colon, um, A, makes the following required findings, and B, considers these conditions.
Right. It's just it doesn't fall, they don't both follow.
In the same, same category.
We can fix the grammar.
Yeah, let's just fix the grammar.
Do you have any issue, either of you guys, with the content?
So, I, I, I mean, under two. So if, what if the non-conforming structure was?
That's, I don't see.
That's a separate totally category. You can't make a finding for that.
No.
Okay. Or the predates are the county's zoning code, and there're no, there's no paperwork anywhere.
That's different.
Then it was legally established.
Non-conforming. If it predates the zoning code, it's a legal non-conforming use. If, if there's a, I mean, if there, if it's not legal with building requirements, they can't get themselves.
There are no, there are no building permits, and it predates the zoning code. So we don't know how the structure got there. I'm, I'm dealing with structures like that.
If it predates the zoning code, it automatically is a legal non-conforming use, because there was nothing prohibited.
Right.
Right, but what if there are no.
Same thing with the building code.
But there are no building permit records.
That's okay.
Right.
Because.
It usually precedes.
Predates.
Predate, uh, building.
Right.
Requirements.
We dealt with that with the gun club.
Oh, okay.
With what?
It is the gun club issue.
Oh, yeah.
Predated the zoning code part of it, so.
And anything they did would have to conform with the building code, anything new.
Right. So are we okay with, uh, findings, conditions? Are we ready to move on?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm
No.
struggling here.
Okay. You want me to see if Martha can change it?
Yeah, well, I'm trying to clarify.
You want to wordsmith it yourself?
No. Under conditions.
Okay.
When making its decision on an application for an expansion of non-conforming use, the planning commission may establish conditions
Mm-hmm.
that are necessary, including, okay, so all these are optional.
Right.
If.
If necessary.
If necessary.
Yes.
Okay.
Including but not limited to, so you can be creative.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
But then there's that substitution of a non-conforming use.
Well, yeah, when you get down to that.
Well, I, do you have problems with the tenancy, ownership, management, absence of permit? Those seem pretty straightforward.
See. Yeah, I will, I was unclear on C, absence of permit. Any use that is non-conforming solely by reason of the absence of a permit, that means.
Like a building permit. They built a house, the house, the use is allowed, but they didn't have a building permit, or they needed a CUP or an AUP, and they didn't get one.
Yeah.
Right.
Right. That's how I understand it.
They can get the permit, they don't have to tear their house.
Later, okay.
Right.
But if you get the permit, that doesn't mean that you can you still have a non-conforming use, then any expansion of that use is subject to the.
You might need an additional CUP.
But this is saying that if it's non-conforming solely by reason of the absence of, this is a different situation.
Yeah, okay. Okay, now substitution of non-conforming use. Did you, did you have something on that?
I, I, I don't understand.
I, I didn't, I, I think.
Why we would let somebody substitute another non-conforming use.
I think it should be gone. Maybe we don't understand.
The intention.
Why.
No, it is, it is, I, I questioned it myself, too.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought it was odd, but apparently this is what other jurisdictions do.
Yeah, and, and.
We don't like it.
The, the, the problem now becomes the amortization, the type of documents that have to be filed.
Yeah.
And how, you know, twenty-five years later, somebody will be able to still make sure that, you know, the, the, the schedule is being kept. That have been, those have been the kinds of problems with, with this particular type of language that I've worked with. It doesn't mean it, it's not, uh, helpful, but it's just, it's just very difficult to, um, to track one who set up an amortization schedule for something that's not conforming.
It just seems.
Well, and I think it, it's contrary to the purpose of permitting and non-conforming use. That, that you fell into this situation.
Right.
You ought to be able to continue doing what you were doing.
Right.
You fell into this situation, and you can change what you were doing to something else that wasn't conform, doesn't make any sense.
I think it's dependent to a certain extent on how narrow your definition of use is. We've usually used it pretty broadly, so maybe it was an office and you want to make it a retail shop.
Right.
So that's okay.
Right.
You're not really changing the use. It's, it's a commercial use. And it's continuing, it's a commercial use.
Right.
But.
But that can also be done, what, by having the planning directors say it's a similar use to something on the list. You don't even need to get to non-conforming.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I think this almost is to the extreme.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, not completely changing to something different.
Yeah.
You guys, you guys just put this in to make sure we were paying attention, right?
No.
A shoe store to have a special right to become a nuclear test site.
Right. That's what we're trying to avoid.
Yeah.
Well, let me think about that.
So I think you're right. I think, you know, I mean, we have the ability to say this use is similar, you know, within the.
Yeah, we're fine with that.
But, yeah, but I, I would say that this is, to me, it almost seems like we're trying to address the extreme, you know, differences.
Giving, giving a special break
Yeah.
to the people that we're trying to give some break.
We can eliminate it.
Well, I mean, in, in, in certain jurisdictions where, you know, uh, you know, the land is really hard to come by, and everybody's living on top of one another, this kind of thing is applicable.
Yeah.
Uh, in our setting, uh, it, it, you know, it's not as dire
Right.
as it might be.
I mean, we still have a lot of vacant land for people, you know, to purchase. So are we in agreeance that it's just
Yep.
too much of a
Withers and everything?
Stretch?
Yeah.
I mean, you're, you're essential by being here. We want to listen to what you have.
He's listening. He's trying to minimize his.
Yeah, voice.
He's, he's saving his voice. He's gonna draw.
We could do this all in charade.
That's right.
Video.
Okay, we just have a little more time, so abandonment of non-conforming use, I think we can.
Yeah, that's a good place to stop.
Yeah, let's stop there.
And then we'll pick up parking.
Get into parking, it starts getting a little technical, and I think we're getting tired.
Okay, that. I understand that, okay, uh, been abandoned or vacated for a period of twelve months. But then, the twelve-month period shall commence when the use ceases and any one of the following occurs. So say you had a legal use in nineteen seventy-five, it become, became a legal non-conforming use in twenty twenty. Uh, you abandoned it, and the, the title's enacted in twenty twenty-four. You abandoned it in twenty twenty-five. And then you want to resume it in twenty twenty-eight. And there's a change of ownership in between the twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-eight.
Right.
So it's, you've got three years of non-use, and and none of, none of these, none of these A, B, C, D applies. I'm not sure why we're why we're extending the period of twelve, or not starting the period of twelve months, when the use ceases and any one of the following occurs.
Might be hard to know when the use ceases.
Without these.
Business license records.
Right. You almost need these in order to make the determination of when they ceased.
They're, they're really, we're really saying, when, when you can establish that.
Right, right. Because these are all the things we look to, you know?
Uh.
Has the site been vacated, you know? Do we have record of a business license, um? You know, if you're not finding those things, you may have to go to the.
Water for a year.
Exactly, yeah.
We're pretty sure it was vacated.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so now I, that makes sense. We're really determining when the use ceased. And how about just when the use ceases as indicated by any one of the following? Or do you want to just still be able to be able to rely on neighbor saying he hasn't used this for twelve months? I mean, are there other times where you can establish that the use ceased without any of these?
The other thing is, is there's kind of a loophole, is when the use ceases and one of the following, we could say the use.
That's what I'm looking.
Yeah, that's what I was.
When, when the use ceases as established by any one of the.
Right.
As indicated or whatever, yeah.
Because then you get all their friends saying, well, yeah, we didn't do any of these things, but the, but secretly underground in a bunker somewhere, the use was.
Well, and I wonder if we need or something that, or a similar evidence.
What else would that mean?
Seems like it covers everything, but who knows?
So E could be any equivalent evidence?
Yeah.
The building burnt down, yeah.
Of course, when the building burns down, you get more time.
Yeah, that's true.
Any similar.
Similar?
Similar.
Evidence?
Evidence.
That's under, under E.
Move it out of E.
A new E.
Whatever way makes sense there.
Yeah. Okay, then that makes sense.
Okay. All right, parking tomorrow.
Parking tomorrow. So they.
So the schedule is?
The schedule is we are meeting tomorrow for our regularly scheduled planning commission meeting. We are continuing this meeting tomorrow if there is time, but that we will end this meeting sometime at noon.
Yeah.
And that we will resume these meetings. We need a calendar. On Wednesday, when Thanksgiving?
No, it's the weekend after, hang on. Yeah, so it would be, um, Wednesday, November twenty-ninth.
Well, given the circumstances, tomorrow, would you pass me the gavel, I want to chine up the brass.
So would somebody like to make a motion to that affect that? Whatever that schedule. All in favor? I.
Give a second. Oh, I'll second it.
Yes, okay, so we will be, we'll see each other tomorrow. No, it's not November ninth, it's December ninth. When we come. We're already in November, tomorrow's, we're going to resume this meeting on November ninth, but then we will have two weeks where we will have no meetings.
Okay.
And then we will resume with a special meeting on Wednesday.
November.
Twenty-ninth.
Right.
Gotcha.
So our next meeting is the twenty-ninth.
Our next meeting is tomorrow.
I mean, yeah.
And then the twenty-ninth, correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's what we approved.
I remember that motion, right?
And I believe, oh, well, there's an opportunity for commissioner reports, anybody who would like to tell us what they're doing.
Well, yeah, just that, that I have read what the, the consultants of Santos and have gone through it and tried to find whether inconsistencies.
I think we can't talk about that today.
No, I know, I'm just. I'm just reporting.
Perfect. And then, and you don't want to speak, because your, your report is that.
I can barely speak. Thank you very much for being here, Hector.
Yes, and then, uh, planning director report.
Can I talk about, okay, just reporting out that I also obtained the implementation and monitoring and sequive streamlining for the GHG from the consultants, including their mitigation monitoring program, so.
So will we receive copies of that tomorrow?
I will make copies for you, in fact, I did have copies at the last meeting, but, you know. And then I give everybody a copy of the, uh, draft. Draft plan.
If you could email just the, like, through page sixty-one or whatever.
Just page sixty-one?
Well, let me, let me see.
I can scan that and email it to you. The other thing I can do, i- if you have fobs you can give to me, I can download this document on your FOB. Because I cannot email that document to you. It's, I tried emailing it and it's too large, even as a PDF document, it was kicked back.
Well, I mean, how about if we do, uh?
But, but I can do maybe ten, uh, ma- you know, divide it into four perhaps and send them.
Posted to the website and then we could download just the section.
Yeah, I can, I can have it posted on the website, yes. Or, again, I, if you have a FOB, I could copy it on a FOB for you.
You know, I have been able to download from what the consultant sent me.
Yeah.
But it isn't something that my Mac will convert to Word, whereas sometimes.
Oh, so you want a Word converted document?
It would be something that at least can be converted to Word.
Yeah, or that would, it would make it larger, if I, if I converted this to Word, I would only, I will only be able to post it somewhere where you can actually reclaim it. Because even, even as PDF, it's much, much larger than.
You can open a PDF on your Mac, right? You have Adobe, I'm assuming.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So if it's posted on the website as a PDF, you should be able to get it from there.
Getting it is one thing, I, it's, sometimes the, the documents I get from Gabriel, I can go to save and it will save, convert, it says converting to Word document and saving. Uh, what I got from the consultant.
Yeah, this, this, Tim, just to, just to, this would be a little, this would be a little difficult. This would be a li- a little difficult to do because of the graphics in it. It might be a little difficult to change to Word, uh, because of the graphics in it. But we'll, we'll try the best, we'll, we'll do the best we can.
Earlier thing that had the chart.
Yeah, yeah, that changed.
These two pages though.
Pie charts, it's got pie charts in it though.
So if it's just the two pages that you're looking for.
Oh, no, no, I'm, I'm looking, sooner or later, I think, we're going to need to be sending back a version indicating where we disagree.
Okay.
And that's.
So just tell me what pages it is you want and I will.
Okay, the first sixty-one pages.
First sixty-one pages.
How's that?
Great, okay, done.
Or we could do a bullet list that says page this, paragraph whatever.
I guess we better do it sixty-two.
Okay.
Yeah.
Two.
Very good.
Okay, that happy news, we're adjourned and I will see everybody tomorrow morning at nine, you'll be hard, two minutes to nine.
Thank you.